Have a roll call, please.
Kathy Patnood.
Here.
Dave Florio.
Yeah.
Luke Murray.
Here.
Donna Coloneyan.
Yeah.
James Pearson.
Present.
Craig Lovis.
Here.
Lori Andries. I see you. And Senator Manjirelli.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. I'd like to start with just a moment of silence as we consider the work before us this evening. Okay, thank you. Moving on to the mission statement of Coventry Public Schools. If, Mrs. Coloneyan, if you could do the honor of reading the statement for us, please.
I sure can. The mission of Coventry Public Schools is to inspire, support, and challenge all students in an inclusive community to be critical thinkers, effective communicators, reflective learners, responsible individuals, and global citizens.
Thank you. I forgot to welcome all of our viewers out there. Looks like we have 50 participants, so thank you so much for joining us. That being said, let's move on to agenda item number two, which is the approval of minutes. It was our reference number one. Is there a motion?
I'm sure I make a motion to approve the minutes of June 25th, 2020, as presented slash amended.
For a second. Back in the motion. Thank you. Do we have a roll call, please?
Kathy Patnood.
Yes.
Dave Florio.
Yes.
Luke Murray.
Yes.
Donna Coloneyan.
Yes.
James Pearson.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Luckily, none of you had any questions, because I didn't ask. Moving on to item number three, which is the celebration for Coventry School Teacher of the Year. Mr. Lovis, did you want to start?
Sure. Sure, I'm going to start, then I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Lucian, who I see on our panel here. And so I just wanted to say, I was supposed to do this earlier, but I just turned 59 Saturday, so I'm going to use that as an excuse.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Happy birthday, Craig.
Thank you, Dave. Thank you. My point was, I'm getting old and forgetful, so I want to...
Hey, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute now. I'm 64. I know.
We had numerous, every school submitted a candidate for Teacher of the Year. They were their selection at the school. We had outstanding, we always have outstanding candidates. And obviously, this was a very challenging, crazy year that we've experienced. And I'm very proud to say that out of all the candidates, we identified Cheryl Soccia, who's here on our panel. Cheryl is a middle school teacher. She's been teaching for, I believe, over 10 years. And, you know, if you look at, and I shared with you the application that was submitted by Ms. Lucian, but by his leadership team, and I think it speaks for itself. But I want to turn it over to Ms. Lucian, just to say a few things about Cheryl. And then I'd like the school committee to, you know, have an opportunity of comments. And then at the end, we can listen to Cheryl, and then, obviously, if any of the attendees want to speak. So, Mr. Lucian, if you don't mind.
Hi, everybody. I just wanted to speak a little bit about Cheryl, because some of you all know her and others don't. And I think it would be a disservice if we didn't really hit some highlights about her. She's an outstanding teacher, and I couldn't be more proud to have her in my building. So, a little bit about Cheryl. She teaches on a half-team, which means that she teaches both ELA and social studies, which is two different spectrums on the scale of teaching different curriculum. Any visitor that goes into our classroom observes exceptional classroom practice. She's skilled at making those teacher moves look easy on the surface, but based on informed observations of what her students need. Many times, I go into a classroom to observe her referring to student data as she plans for future lessons. It's something that we've really been pushing, and she's exceptional with that. Her classroom routines are apparent and yet seamless. Her rapport with the students is genuine and positive. Her understanding of what each student needs to feel safe, to still be successful, is based on careful preparation and study. And trust me, there is a ton of preparation that she always does. Her teammates say that there's always plenty of inspiration to take away, to apply to her own lessons after they speak with her. She always puts the needs of childrens and family first. She recognizes that each student and each parent is unique individual and makes a priority to meet the needs of every child, no matter what the circumstances are. And especially when she meets with the families. And what I love about her is what somebody said is that she makes it and does it so that it is not a one-size-fits-all solution. And that really exemplifies what Cheryl's about. I'm honored that she stayed at ASFMS despite having to apply for a one-year ELA position since I got there for the last three years. And she finally was appointed a permanent ELA position, which is awesome, and I'm so excited. She's an amazing teacher, and I think the biggest compliment is if I ever had a son or daughter that had her for a teacher, I would be ecstatic about it. So, I have to give my hands off to say congratulations, Cheryl. Much deserved, and I swear, she is an awesome poster person for what Teacher of the Year should be.
Thank you so much, Joe. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lucian. I'm gonna, I know, I hope the school committee did read the nomination form. I read it, and it was just awesome. But I'm going to start with Dave for your comments, and then we'll just go down to the school committee members.
Cheryl, this is absolutely, come on. Thank you, Kathy. Cheryl, this is an absolutely awesome achievement. I work as a sub in West Greenwich, and sometimes I have to do both as well as a sub. But to see a recommendation like this for a teacher is absolutely incredible. Very, very, I'm so proud to have you working for the school system of Coventry. And I hope, I hope, I wish you the best in your future job. And I am just so proud of you, Cheryl, for everything you've done for the children of Coventry. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Florio.
Thank you, Mr. Florio. Mr. Murray, your comments?
I want to, you know, Joe summed it up very well, but I want to thank you for your dedication to the Coventry School System. I'm very glad you're staying with us despite some challenges. And it's always nice to observe those who put in the extra time and effort. You know, really, we all think a teacher's role is well-defined, but you define it, right? You have a lot of flexibility to find it your own way, and you've done that. I think that's an honor to you. I'd be honored to have my own daughter, who's at the middle school in your class. I hope she has the opportunity to. But in reading some of this, you know, just some of the individualized work, it takes a lot of time and effort to do that, and I really do appreciate that. I hope you know that we all, both as a committee member and a parent, I see it every day, the individualized effort that gets put into my own kids to their own special needs. And that takes that above and beyond to really specialize and realize with all the kids we have to deal with, that they feel important in our system. That they'll take away that Coventry isn't about just processing out and doing the bare minimum. That they have a chance to have a voice. And I think that's very important to me, again, not only as a committee person, but as a parent. So, thank you very much. Keep putting in the great effort, and this is probably one of many awards you get in your career.
Thank you, Mrs., Mr. Murray. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Mrs. Coloneyan?
I read through this, and it's clear that this is not just a job to you. You actually put your heart and soul into going into that classroom every day, and it's so shows. And it's just an honor to have you in our school system to, you know, I mean, just reading some of the things that your teammate wrote about you and Ms. Lucia, it's just, it's amazing. I am really, really proud that you are a part of Coventry. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Coloneyan.
Thank you, Mrs. Coloneyan. Mr. Pearson, your comments?
I just want to say congratulations, and thank you so much for your hard work and dedication. You know, there's, I think you get it. You understand that there's so much on the line with teaching our future generations, and you're giving them such a wonderful experience. I know the school system has so many great teachers. My children have had great teachers along the way. Unfortunately, I didn't get you, but that's not to say anything negative about the teachers my children have had. So, I just want to, again, thank you for your hard work and dedication, and look forward to having you in our district for a long time.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson.
And finally, my comments, Cheryl. Just reading the nomination forms and your comments from your colleagues must have made you so heartfelt. Not only the ability you have as a teacher, but also a collaborator with your colleagues. The fact that you, I think one thing stood out to me was that you never fail to stop by and, you know, check in with your colleague on the team in the morning. You've established relationships, not only with your students, but obviously with your colleagues, and they consider you their friend. And so, for that, plus all the wonderful things you do as a teacher, obviously, very much shown in the nomination papers. We're very proud of you, and we are so happy that you've been on in this way. So, congratulations, and enjoy your year of Teacher of the Year.
Thank you, Mrs. Patnood, very much. If I may say, I am...
Oh, boy.
I'm absolutely humbled, and so... Everyone hear me okay? I'm so honored to just be part of an incredible building. It's easy to do my job. It really is, because I'm surrounded by amazing people from an incredibly supportive administration team and an amazing group of teachers and staff members. And I don't think there's a teacher out there who is not in it to enjoy the kids, and that we've always had just wonderful students that we try to do the best for. But it's very easy to do, to do your job in a building that we are in at Feinstein, and I'm just very proud to be a part of that building. I'm also so excited to represent Coventry. And when I think about it, my husband and I have lived in town for going on 30 years. We've raised our daughters in this district. My oldest daughter is a teacher in the district, and my grandson will be up and coming in about five years in the district. So, we are definitely a Coventry family, and I think I'm just so excited to represent our amazing district on the state level. So, thank you so much. But again, I would not be here and would not have this honor if I was not surrounded by incredible people from my team to my grade level to everyone at Feinstein. I'm really so proud to be a part of that building.
Thank you for those comments. I don't know if, Mr. Murphy, if you can let me know if there are any raised hands? I don't see any from the attendees. I mean, from the panelists.
Ms. Patnood, can we just remind individuals that if you hit the participants bar, you'll see the, you should see the raise hand function, so that you can raise your hand, and then, Mr. Murphy will let the school committee chair know that you want to speak. Having said that, I don't see any raised hands, so...
Yeah, there are no raised hands yet.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
Thank you again very much.
You're welcome.
Ms. Patnood, can I just say that at some point, whenever that point takes place, we will recognize Cheryl in front of her colleagues. And I know that she's been recognized in front of, with the middle school. I think they surprised you, but we will do that officially. Not sure when that will be, but it'll be sometime, unable to get everybody together. So, just want to acknowledge that.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lovis. Again, congratulations, Cheryl, and good luck on the state level. We'd be proud to pieces if you become the state Teacher of the Year.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And anyway, I... You're welcome. Moving on to number four, which is the Coventry High School Decennial Final Report from the ESK. I'm not sure who's going to start this.
I'll just start, and then I'm going to turn, I'll turn it over to Ms. May Cumber. Just, if you remember, we had the, right before schools were closed down, we were fortunate. Was it a week? I think a week before, prior to the 13th. We had the visiting team come. I know some individuals were able to attend that readout with the visiting team, and they were just so amazed with the climate and culture, the interaction between students and students, students and staff, the collegial atmosphere. They, it was just amazing. And, you know, not to our surprise, they identified the areas that we know have been weaknesses. A, obviously, our facilities. And then, B, while we've done a lot of work on it the last couple of years, we're still in the process of completing curriculum work. So, they, you know, I don't think there were any surprises there. So, I've asked Ms. May Cumber to come. You have a copy of the report. We'll post the report on our website tomorrow. And I asked Ms. May Cumber to come, and just if she doesn't mind just highlighting some of the areas, some of the commendations, and then some of the areas of need.
Okay, sure. So, I don't use much, so if I'm going to share my screen, because I just put some commendations and recommendations down that they highlighted in the report. What do I hit, share? No. Jim, want to help me share with this? Because I don't have a share button at the bottom to share my screen.
Along the bottom, you should have a button that says, "Share Screen."
Is it coming up?
And then you have to pick which window you want to share.
Yeah. Did it come up or not? Is it showing?
Not yet.
Yeah, so it's, sorry. Yeah, just...
Hold on. Okay, you'll just have to tell me when you want to advance.
Hold on. Now I'm like kicked out of here, Jim. I can't even see you guys. Because I can hear you, but I can't see you. Sorry, everyone.
Do you see your slideshow?
No. Did I just cancel my screen because you're showing from yours?
Yes.
So, we have the visit. We kind of went out on a high note, really, with the, after the visit. You know, we ended our year, basically, on a really high note. I know Kathy, you were there when they made the report out. And like Greg said, they pointed out things that we knew we still need to work on. But if you go to the second slide, Jim, on the foundational elements rating. So, two years ago, we had a collaborative visit, and we had to, we had to do a lot of self-assessment, and we rated ourselves, and the team came in and they gave us ratings as well. And at this time, in the foundational elements, we did not meet standard in three of the areas. And so, based on that, we had to select some priority areas to work on. So, since that time, you know, with our, with the decennial visit, we improved in one of those areas, and we're really getting close in other areas. But if you go to the next slide, you can see the priority areas that we had selected to work on for the two years prior to the decennial visit. And this is what the team was looking for when they came in, also, to see our improvements in these areas that we had identified, and they had agreed with us. So, Jim, if you go to the next slide versus priority areas. So, we knew that we needed to implement a school improvement team. We needed to do complete curriculum work. We know that we have some significant issues with our building and facilities. We wanted to focus on social-emotional learning. And also, we did not have the vision of graduate in decent, which is a requirement from the ESK. So, we did step the work two years ago to implement that. And so, our commendations from the report, while we did not meet standard with the curriculum, they were really torn on this, but they were not there yet, although they're very certain that we're going to be there. And so, they think that we have a very tough stuff going on right now, and a great curriculum template that all departments are using. Our vision of the graduate, again, they loved our approach to that and bringing in all different stakeholders on that and working with the district on that to implement something that's really meaningful. Also, in terms of grading and revision, we spent a lot of time in our school improvement team working on grading and revisions and making some guidelines for teachers around those areas. And also, the school improvement team has really helped improve the professional practice in the building. They also loved some of our new policies that helped to promote student engagement, and also social-emotional practices that are still in place. They were impressed with our new OKR Connect program that lots of teachers and Don and Erin Point have been working on our school. They were very impressed, although the building itself is old, and they were very impressed with the custodians in just how clean and well-maintained our building is, considering the fact that we have so few custodians on during the day. But they were very impressed with that, and they were extremely impressed with the positive rapport between students and staff. That was something they really could not get over. Also, the collaborative process between departments to support social and emotional needs of students. They came in, they thought that they were, we were going to not meet in this area because of our student-to-guided counselor ratio that we have, but they were impressed with all of the programs that we have to support kids, and it felt like the kids had support in every area in the school. And also, they were very impressed with the TE programs and the number of students who are involved in career attack. So, some of the recommendations that they had, and these are, these are the recommendations that they gave us. These four that are on the screen here on the next slide, Jim. Jim, are you going to the next slide? So, the first one, the first recommendation is to ensure adequate professional development time and funding to complete the curriculum revision cycle. So, currently, World Language and Social Studies are working on curriculum. Also, around developing rubrics to go along with the vision, to assess the vision of the graduate. So, we have already at high school written those rubrics, and there is a plan for, and just change the language to make them more user-friendly for those age groups. And so, that is already happening, and it's almost to completion at high school. It's a varsity onto the new PBR system. We're putting in the process of coming there, and it has been approved, and we're looking at gradual implementation and working highly executive on the vision of graduate. And we do have a plan at district to get us from those areas. We are almost there meeting all of those things. So, I'm really, I'm really proud of the work that's been done over the last couple of years. It has been, it's their need as a school, and it's been from, it's been teacher-driven, and so it's just very successful. So, that's pretty much my report out. Does anyone have any questions?
What? Thank you, Brooke. That was wonderful. And actually, the report is, I didn't catch everything you said. My internet is the best, but I did read the report.
Can you hear me?
So...
We can now.
I can hear you. But it was, it was pretty echoey for me. Ah, there you are. We didn't see you previously. I had some trouble hearing some of your presentation, but I, it was very echoey. But then again, my internet isn't the best in the world. Luckily, I did read the report, so...
Basically, out of the four recommendations, we're already working on them, and we are very close to completing almost all of them. So, I don't think it could have gone any better than it has, and it helped us really move forward as a school.
Thank you so much. I'm going to start with Dave for any comments you might have or questions for Brooke.
Hey, Brooke. Are you sure you're a first-year principal? You've done outstanding work at this high school. Absolutely outstanding. I mean, from everything, from the accreditation to the graduation, to everything. You have, you've made a very difficult year possible for so many kids, and I really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dave. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Like I said, it's, a lot of this work has been done, or a good majority of it has been done by teachers. So, that's, it's great work that they've done.
Thank you, Mr. Florio. Mr. Murray?
Hey, Brooke. So, thanks to you and the team, the very large team that worked on this, and we were privileged enough to have updates as we went. So, the audio connection wasn't great. I didn't get the boil down. I'll be honest. It was, definitely had a hard time tracking there. I wasn't picking up what you were throwing down. But I'm looking at the report. I got the gist of what your presentation was, and I think I need to get my head wrapped around it a little bit further. I'd be lying if I dug into it in a busy week. But the boil down is, curriculum, what I heard was, you know, curriculum facilities remain an issue. Correct?
Yeah. That's, I mean, that's something, very hard for us to control that. And like I said, which you didn't hear, but they were extremely impressed with how clean the building was and how hard the custodians work that we do have. So, they commended them. But they, they couldn't get over some of the, like, they walked in our gym and just thought, oh, my gosh. This is, like, they thought the bleachers were an absolute hazard in the gym. And, you know, so some of the areas, they know need attention immediately. So, we're, you know, again, that's an area that's really difficult for us to do on our own. We need funding to do that. But everything that we can control, the curriculum and the vision of the graduate and all of that, is, you know, we're working towards it.
And just so everyone understands, how many, how many...
And uh, just so everyone understands, how many, how many custodial staff do we have, let's say in the morning, starting to clean that entire school?
In the morning?
Yeah.
We have one there and then, and then one comes in a little later. They're staggered.
Anyone been to the high school?
You know, fourteen hundred and fifty kids and a hundred and fifty staff members, you start with one during the day and then we have two.
My understanding is we have a kind of an overlapping custodian that that comes in in the afternoon, correct, for a couple hours?
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, that's a credit to them. I guess I give a shout out to the custodial staff if that was a, a mark on our bell as far as the, you know, um, for one person. I, I don't think I could run from one end of that school to the other in, in ten to fifteen minutes, never mind clean it. So I'll give them a shout out on that. Um, as far as your work as a team and the vision of the graduate, um right down to the, the mission statement, which you, your team modified, um you did an outstanding job, I think, of per uh making a cohesive sort of effort to this, like a comprehensive effort that's cross schools, cross spectrum. Um, it wasn't just about the high school. It pulled everyone into the process, which it was extremely impressive. Um, as far as curriculum, you know, I know that Don's working diligently with the staff to address that, where we didn't have a curriculum for many, like unified curriculum, I'll say, many years. So hopefully, people understand that that's not gonna happen overnight, but it's being worked on. Um, is there any, I, I guess my last question is what you take out of the report? I know what they said. Was there anything that, that was not in this report where you felt, you know, that they, uh, how do I, how do I ask this? Uh, basically, like, you may feel that there may be other things that we need to work on that maybe not contained in this NEAS report that are outside the purview.
Um, I mean, we, we are, we definitely have a lot of work still to do on our grading and revision. We have not created a policy on that. We, we put out guidelines. Um, there's all sorts of work with the school improvement team that we'll continue to do to identify areas of need in the high school. So that work with the school improvement team won't stop. I think that just is ongoing and, and really dependent on what we have going on in the building and, and definitely the curriculum. And, and the curriculum's gonna be like a cyclical process, because once it's written, you know, then we need to look, it, it just continues, because then you're revising curriculum that was written, you know, years back and kind of a never-ending process. Um, so, I mean, there's, there's always work to be done and there's still tons of work to be done with the vision of the graduate and the new PBR um system that we have that we're implementing. And so much work and focus really is, is trying to be focused on the entire district that it is a K through twelve vision of the graduate. And when we started the NEAS process, we had to do this, we had to do this. It's part of NEAS, the vision of the graduate. But what we found was, as we were doing it, we found that it was so helpful to us and so meaningful and it was making some meaningful changes, not only just within our school, but within the district as well. So there's just a lot to, to still be done with it, but we are, I would say, from the do not meet, uh does not meet um rating, that in many areas, um, over the course of this next school year, we should be in the meets in those.
No, that's good. And I know it was, we were one of the first, if not, my understanding is the first school to go through this new process. So I know that others.
Yeah, they, yeah, they wanted to use our vision of the graduate as um a model for other schools and they also wanted our NEAS coordinators to come and work for them too. So they offered Kristen and Julie, um, they offered them both jobs.
That's huge credit. So, I mean, on the positive sides, one, it did what it was supposed to do, right? Got everyone collaborating and looking at K through twelve.
Mm-hmm.
And the fact that we were the tip of the spear on this and then other school districts are looking at us, I think that's a huge credit for the Coventry school system. So I hope everyone understands that and takes that away. And I hope that's the takeaway in the media. You know, we have, we're always gonna have stuff to work on, but I think the takeaway is we have outstanding staff here and we, we really led the way on this and I'm proud of that.
Yep.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Uh, Mrs. Colonian?
I gotta say, I, I think I heard every other word you said, but I did read the report and I wasn't really surprised at the things that didn't meet. Um, I know that Don's been working diligently, you know, with the curriculum for the past few years and, and um, and I know that our buildings are not where they need to be, although like uh Mr. Murray said, kudos to the, the janitorial staff because, or staff of one person that, that gets the, uh, the place clean.
Yep.
Because that, that is a daunting, especially, you know, all those children in, in those, in that building, so. But I, um, like I said, I didn't hear everything on your report. I, I would like to maybe take a look at your, your slides and just, you know, try to put something together that you were saying, because I did not hear a word and I, I really liked, liked to hear the, the, the presentation. But thank you so much for all that you've done. And, and as Dave said, you, you know, for a first year principal, you've really knocked it out of the park.
Thank you.
Really, her second year, but we call it her first year, so.
I'll argue it's, it's a first year.
We'll give you all the cadews you need. Um, okay, um, Mr. Pearson, comment?
Um, no, it's good to see the results of this. I know we've been talking about the NEAS report for, actually don't know, remember how long, that's how long it's been. Um, and just, I guess emphasis, reiterate the, the building situation and we need capital and we need, uh, we need a plan for doing something with our facilities in this town. We can't just let them crumble. But thank you to you and your team for the good work on this. It's, again, nice to see the output from the, from the NEAS and um, looking forward to the good additional work that will come out of the recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Um, and finally, I, um, my hat is off to all of your team, Brooke. Um, I know we've had multiple presentations, um, knowing that this was a new process from, for NEAS and that, um, you all took up the, the challenge and did an awesome job. Um, and even though, you know, it's a, I think it was a forty-two page report, um, you know, there's so much work that went into that report. And so, um, we really appreciate the work that you all did and will continue to do. There's still a lot more that needs to be done. We, you can figure that out when you read it, but to get the recommendation, the recommendations from the team in, in so many really good areas was very, um, was very nice to see. And so, um, I know that you guys will continue your good work and some of the things that, you know, that we didn't, you know, meet standard on were things that we are not surprised about. So, um, I know that we'll work as hard, you guys will work as hard as you can to meet some of those expectations. Um, so again, um, wonderful, good job and thank you to you and to your team for all the work to put this all together. Um, it's really a, an amazing piece of work, so thank you. Anything else from anybody from the public? Do we see any raised hands?
Just Pat, no, I'd like to say something, but I know Mr. Florio has his.
Again.
He's just real hand waving, so I'll defer to him, if it's okay with you.
All right, sure.
Madam Chair, well.
Did you want to say something?
Sure, Madam Chair. When I, in the seventies, I worked for a program called Mount Pleasant Tutorial Incorporated and I was the coordinator. And what we always said was, bricks and mortar does not make a school, because the schools were terrible then. It's the teachers that make the school. It's the administrators and that's what I leave with you, Brooke. It's the teachers that make the school. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome, Mr. Florio.
I just, can I just say a, just a couple of words? Um, you know, one of the things that was loud and clear during this, and if you go, went through the high school during the NEAS visit, it was just that sense of community, but um, what, what many teachers, you know, will come up to me and, and, and her colleagues, the administrators, just about, you know, sometimes you have those individuals, we have many of them, our community, but that, you know, as a, as a supervisor, as a leader, people just wanna follow you. And that's what I heard constantly, uh, in, in the high school, the teachers, her colleague, you know, the administrators, they just wanna follow Brooke's lead, you know? And, and the students and, and, you know, Dave was talking about the teachers and the, in the administration making the, the, the school. Um, but what they've done, they've, they've transcended that to the, the students and families, right? It's a true school community. And I think the, the momentum that happened really helped carry through the, uh, this pandemic effort. I mean, if, just seeing how positive everybody was and, you know, the, the visiting team would say, is this real? Like, when they came in and they had that unified game, the alumni versus the unified team, and it was just to get fifteen hundred students and the entire faculty in that gym, um, you know.
I was chatting that day, not gonna lie.
No, but it.
It was awful, but they went well, but it was, it was air-bucking.
Of course it was. What I'm saying is that's the real, that wasn't just a show. That happened in Coventry High School. And I think we saw that as somebody had said it carried out through the, um, the graduation and, you know, were able to focus on, you know, what they were able to accomplish, not everything that was lost. So I just wanna highlight, you know, again, Ms. Maycumber, the, the Julie Macarone and Kristen Capwell just did a phenomenal job and, and everybody, it was just amazing. So just, you know, we're gonna build on that. They're, they are building on that. So thank you very much.
Cool. Um, I would like to put it out to the public. Are there any attendees that would like to make any comments about what you've heard? Does anybody see any raised hands?
There are none.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Murphy. Again, thank you so much, Brooke. We really appreciate your leadership, even if your audio wasn't the best today.
People appreciate that, I think.
No, 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 no. Thank you so much and thanks for being such a great leader.
Thank you.
Okay. I guess we can move on to number five, which is the reentry task force subcommittee report. So, Mr. Love, if you would like to.
So, we are in the midst of planning our scenarios for coming back and I'm gonna kind of talk big picture, even though we're due, we've created a couple of links on our website that we started to populate. We have links just for our task force. We broke them up into our three subcommittees. We've had a total of, I, I've been, uh, there's been, there have been six task force type of meetings just this week alone. Um, just, we've met with the superintendents. I, I think we've let everybody know that I'm working with the eight other AFT superintendents. Mrs. Erinakis is, you know, helping drive that with um the other union leadership. And we've committed to work together and, and kind of uh maybe push back or really drive this. You know, there's a lot of information out there. You just have to listen to the national press. Um, people are getting very nervous. Um, we're making sure that whatever we do in our plans, safety's gonna drive that. And we're not using safety as something that's gonna prevent us from moving forward, but we're gonna be realistic. You know, I'm, I've always said that, you know, whether it's my winter letter about when we determine we're gonna cancel school or delays, it's about thinking of the safety of our staff and students. Um, our nurses have been incredible resource during this process. Uh, we're finding out that, you know, information isn't coming that fast um from the Department of Health. This is my opinion at least. We're not, you know, getting answers that we'd like to get from the Department of Education. They've promised us documents, um, a playbook they've used and we haven't received that. And yet our plan, our, our framework is due next Friday. So, uh, Don and myself have talked, um, you know, it was a meeting with Lori, myself, Don, Jason and Sarah today. We're gonna pull everything together that we've got, that we, that's been driven by this consortium with superintendents, our, our task force information. We'll be populating a, a link on our website, because we wanna make sure as soon as we have this plan, it's available, as soon as we're ready to submit it, I want it to be available for our community. What Ride is saying is we need to share with them, I think, uh, I, I don't know the date, maybe it's sometime in August, but before we submit it next week, we wanna make sure that it's out there for the community. And, and just the big picture is, we're, we're gonna have a distance learning plan. Uh, last night, we looked, worked with the school, uh, the policy subcommittee, Mr. Pearson. I know Dr. Dixon's listening or on, on here. We met with, with Don Coward, who helped facilitate that with many of our teacher leaders and administrators and um our attorney, Sean Cluff, that works with John Anderson. And we spent a lot of time looking at this document. Um, it's gonna drive what we're going to provide for distance learning. You know, we pulled it all together quickly. We know we can do better. We know to do better, we need to provide the, the, the resources and tools to our educators, which includes professional development. We have to make sure that we um can address the needs of our, our, our populations that, uh, like students with specific, certain disabilities, um, students that have social, emotional needs, we have to find better ways. So we, we, you know, I think we did a, a pretty good job, but we wanna make sure that no, no child, you know, not to use a cliche, but nobody's left behind. So we're working hard on that and we believe that there'll always be a component moving forward of distance learning. You know, I'm not ready to go into detail about that as of yet, but that's gonna be a platform that we will be, probably have with us for a long time. Uh, then we're looking at reentry where most students would come back and we're costing that out and that's important, because we're gonna have to look at, obviously, funding. Uh, we did a little exercise today, just a brief exercise, myself, again, I told you, Sarah, uh, Jason, Lori and Don, and we're talking about some of the guidance that's coming out around just looking at our nurses' offices. And do they really meet the needs in terms of what we have to do? You know, do, can we operate with just one nurse in our buildings? So I have some strong concerns around that. Can those space, we don't have a lot of space in our buildings. There's not a lot of extra space, especially in, you know, very few classrooms that would be available. So we've talked about modulators, you know, that would meet a requirement that would be where we could control access to them, where if a child or a staff was identified as being positive or potentially, we could isolate them, because that's crucial in this. Uh, we talked about custodians. Uh, you know, Mr. Murray brought up how many custodians we have, right? One. It's embarrassing, I'm gonna tell you. They, they do a phenomenal job, but for one of the largest high schools in the state to have one custodian for a few hours. You know, we switched that up once we started having issues around COVID-19, but all we did is we pulled some people in earlier. We allowed some people to stay later for overtime. We're gonna have to look at that and, and greatly increase our custodial staff to ensure safety. There's no way around that. So looking at nursing, looking at custodians, looking at modulators, if we need to go that route, just those three areas. And I'm, I'm gonna throw a number out here and, and, you know, but two, two, two and a half million dollars for those three areas, right? And later on, we're gonna be talking about being level funded potentially, right? So we're not even talking about transportation, how many extra buses and what we need to do. And so fully implementation, we're gonna come up with a plan, but, you know, our classrooms, we figured out how many students can we have in a classroom? So I just want the community to understand, we're gonna plan that out, but what we're spending a lot of time on is this hybrid model, where we're gonna get everybody in school, but not everybody would be in school every day. Some populations will be in longer than others, students, young students, pre-K, K, students with disabilities, I, we can put in a stable group, we would have them in much longer than we would have. So we'll be articulating that plan, we'll be costing that out too. Um, and as Mr. Pearson said, we need to, you know, lessons learned, we, we no longer can say, we just can't do this. You know, let, let the community at large say they can't do it, but we have to put our facilities, we're, we're at such a disadvantage, as many districts are, with older, smaller classrooms, um, spaces that really aren't flexible. Our teachers do an amazing job being creative and our administrators in terms of using the space, but no longer can we just say, you know, we need to find creative ways to, to look, move forward, to bring proposals to the community and to engage the community. And unlike what's gonna happen next week in terms of voting on our budget that we put forward, allow the community to make decisions, educated decisions, about the future of Coventry Public Schools. So. So I know I'm off a little task, whatever it's called, topic here, but we will be populating those documents early next week for the community. Again, there'll be three plans. We have from July 17th. It'll be a large framework. Then the real work happens. We have to break down school by school. How we drop off students is going to be different at Blackrock than it will be at Washington, though. How will we get students in smaller, stable groups, you know? How can we isolate? At a middle school, maybe we can isolate teams, right? Because we have teams. But at the high school, you know, how do you stagger class times when kids aren't always in the same class, where classrooms are being utilized? How do we clean desks in between every class? So somebody says, well, we'll have teachers and students do it. But there's a risk with that. And I don't know about you, if you've ever been in a class at the end of class, don't students usually stop and talk to the teacher? Don't some students come in early and want to talk to the teacher before class? And in our schools, we have the teachers monitoring hallways. So, you know, we have a lot of work to do. That work will be done between July 17 and hopefully by August 10. But the community needs to understand that, you know, whatever we come up with as a plan, at the end of the day, we still have to see where we're at August 25, August 26, August 27, you know. Things could all change. And we have to be extremely flexible. We have to be willing and able to transition to a distance learning platform at any given moment. And the last thing I'm going to say is, I understand the needs, you know, from listening to parents and families, and later on, we're going to share the survey with you, that no matter what we do, there's needs, families, you know, we understand that people need to work. And depending on where we're at, so I've been working with the YMCA, and I just want to thank Mike Norckland, who's the executive director, I don't know if many of you know him, he runs Camp Westwood. So we're just in preliminary stages of looking at if students weren't in school, but they needed to be someplace where they could do distance learning for supervision. We're trying to identify spaces in the community where the Y could run programs, where students could do distance learning, and seeing how we could support that, because we understand the burden. You know, I'm not, I don't live in a bubble, you know? And many of you know, I live with my 82-year-old mom, right? So I have the same worries, you know, I'm working all day, wondering, did my mom go to the store? Is she wearing her mask? Does she wash her hands, right? And I hope, and I know my mom's not listening, but, you know, but I mean, I have those same, same issues that, concerns. And then I just happen to be superintendent, so I have a lot of concerns, part of my job. But I don't have young children, right? And I am empathetic. So we are looking, just so the community understands, we're still looking at other opportunities, so that no matter what happens, if we could find a way to support families, and the Y has stepped up to the plate and willing to. But we have to identify space and obviously staffing. But I just want the community to know, because at any point, moving forward, we could just end up in a distance learning. And, you know, the state could be shut down. You know, I appreciate that when we started this process, it was recommended that we don't make it political. I've not, we've not made it political. We're going to focus on the needs of students and our staff and families, and let that drive the process. And, you know, we're working diligently, we're trying to cost everything out, and have, you know, the plans, people will see the different options that we have. We're going to submit a plan. The framework will be similar with the eight other districts, the little nuances, like not everybody has preschool programs like we have. They may not have certain specialized, special education programs or special populations that we have, that we may handle differently. But we're actually going to submit a letter to Ride. Part of the platform, I mean, the template that I shared with everybody, that's on our website, talks about a superintendent letter. We thought, showing solidarity, we would write a letter together, the nine superintendents would sign it, we'd even have the union president sign it. You know, like I said, we're supposed to have some information from Ride that we were supposed to have weeks ago, we still don't have, in terms of helping us develop this. You know, we want to be realistic and be honest. And that's what I've always said, we want to be honest moving forward. And a lot of times, people ask me a question, and the truth is, I just don't know, you know, right now. We're making decisions now for August 31st. So, but I think, you know, early next week, everybody will see what we've put together. Starting tomorrow, we'll populate this, it's a reentry plan, it's like the second link on our website. And that's for the public, and we'll be putting up information there that people can see what we're working off of and try to keep it in terms of the plan component. And then there's a plethora of resources. I've said enough. I'll open up to the committee for questions, and then obviously the public.
Thank you, Mr. Levis. I don't, I don't have any questions, because I think any questions I have, we're not ready to answer yet. And we won't really start knowing what some of the details are until that gets put on the website. But that being said, thank you so much for all the work and for the subcommittee work. I'm going to let Mr. Florio ask any, or have any comment. Do you have anything, Mr. Florio?
I agree with you, Madam Chair. I will not ask Mr. Levis any questions at this point, because I want to see what it looks like on the website. And also, Mr. Levis, I have to commend you. You have done an outstanding job as well, during this whole, from March 13th until whenever. You have been patient, and you have been extremely calm in difficult circumstances. And I commend you, sir. Thank you so much for being our leader. Thank you. That's it, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Florio. Mr. Murray?
I agree with the chairwoman. I don't, I really, at this point, I'm not going to contribute to anything, though I do, I have a million questions. But the truth is, a lot of this is an answer. And you've demonstrated that you're working the problem, just like everyone is in the other school districts, and it sounds like it's being done in a collaborative fashion. So thank you, keep up the hard work. Thanks to everyone on the team. We're going to see how this develops as we go forward. The base thing, I guess I can communicate to parents, and hopefully it came through in your presentation, is that this is, everything is dynamic. Stay that way. It's very difficult as a parent out there, as difficult as an administrator, I'm sure, because this is a moving target. And I know, as a working parent, I have my own concern. So I know you're doing your best. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Mrs. Colonian?
I, like everybody else, I'm looking forward to seeing it on the website. But I just want to thank you and the team for putting everything together. I know it was hard. I know it was difficult, you know, just getting everything thrown at you. And, you know, you've got to try and put something together and set a timeframe. But thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Colonian. Finally, Mr. Pearson, any comments?
I've been going to agree with several of you that it's premature to ask too many questions, because there are just too many unknowns at this time. I'll just make the comment, and Mr. Levis, you won't like this, but I think the hardest work is yet to come. But you know that better than I do. So thank you for what you're doing so far with the limited guidance we have, and look forward to continued work on this, so we can do our best to open schools in the most appropriate manner come August. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Do you see any hands raised from the public?
I see your hand.
Okay. Oh, is it Mr. Cowit?
No.
I have a bit of ad, but I'll wait my turn.
Okay.
Susan, you're unable to talk, just identify yourself and your address, please.
Hi there, I'm Susan Curzio, 3 Sherwood Ave. Can you hear?
Yes.
Okay. So I just want to take a moment to say thank you to the superintendent and the school committee, and the teachers of the district. I don't even, I don't have a child in school, but I am a teacher myself in another district. And I definitely recognize what kind of year it's been for everybody, you know? It's been interesting. Talk about a flipped classroom model, there you go, flip it all on its head. So, and the, you know, the buzz around my neighborhood was that, you know, things happened, things that needed to get done, got done. So thank you for that. That's, you know, a step in the right direction. I am also frustrated with Ride for not providing anybody with information and guidance on how to reopen and reopen safely. I'm interested to hear more about the distance learning and the hybrid models that you're looking at. Where, which website will that information actually be on?
First, thank you for the comments. And Susan, this will be on our, it's covinjuschools.net, our homepage.
Okay.
Once you go on the home, you'll see this big, I think it's a yellow COVID-19 link, and then right under it is a reentry. So, and, you know, as far as your comment about Ride, I just want to say that we've agreed, you know, I make comments because I want to be open and honest about it. However, I don't feel that we're victims of Ride. That's why I'm so, I'm so impressed with at least the superintendents and the union leadership we're working with, because our approach is, we're going to take the lead, you know, we're going to push back at certain things. And we're not, you know, because there's politics. And we've been, you know, while I'll be dealing with, talking a little bit about politics, or it might even be the next agenda item. But we've been fortunate, and I can say that I haven't, you know, even when the school committee member said, let's keep politics out of that, which for me, I, you know, is great, because we're just going to do what we believe is the right thing. And Susan, we have like 56 individuals on our task force that
Great.
include organizations outside the police, the fire, human resources, nonprofit organizations, substance abuse task force, child family services, we have parents. And when, after some of these task force meetings, I listen to the parent, they just want to, they want to give honest input. They want, they take this so seriously. And so, we're very blessed because we have a lot of input, you know? And at the end of the day, though, they're giving us their advisory, because we've been honest in terms of this process, saying that we're part of this consortium, and we need to stick together and drive this. Because what happens is, the way this is set up, it's really going to pit district against district.
Of course.
You know, and we want to make sure that we support one another. So our community, in our community at large, has been very supportive of that, and I believe, accepting of that and understanding. That's not always the case. A lot of times, there's a lot of public pressure, political pressure in a lot of communities. And while, you know, we have our share here, for this process, we've been driving this based on what's in the best interest of our students, our staff, and our families, and our community at large. And I appreciate that. That's because of this community. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Any, were there any other hands? Otherwise, I'll go to Mr. Cowit.
There are no other hands.
Okay, Mr. Cowit, you got the floor.
Yeah, my only comment briefly is just to piggyback on what the superintendent just said, in terms of the work done by the task force. We've only had this template in our hand for a very short amount of time. And the task force has only been really organized for a little bit over a week, week and a half. And the amount of time and energy that the different members of the task force have put into creating this document has been incredible. I lead a committee, Lori leads a committee, and Craig leads a committee. And I can speak for my committee, but I'm sure it's the case for all three. We have a shared document, because in this new COVID era, where you have to have digital meetings, the only way you can get things done are through shared documents and working on shared documents. And I can go on our document almost any time of day and see in the top corner, a number of people who are on the document at the exact same time, adding comments, adding content, asking questions, in a really respectful, productive way. So, you know, no matter what happens, we're going to have a good rapport, a good plan that we're going to submit next week. But it's a direct result of the work done by the people who are part of the task force. And I just wanted to kind of echo what the superintendent said and thank them, because they've really done fantastic work.
Thank you so much, Mr. Cowit. That's really good to know that. I suspect, I want to just thank all of the committee members and for their hard work. And I'm glad that you're proceeding and going, moving forward. But thank you to all of the participants for, you know, their dedication and their hard work. So thank you. That being said, I think we can go to the next agenda item, number six, which is the FY20 budget updates. And Mr. Levis, I think you can start it, maybe go to Sarah?
Yes. So I know we've been talking about, you know, we've been talking about savings. And I just want to inform the committee that one of the big area that we've been talking about is transportation. And so I had a meeting with Tony Murgau, who is oversees Ocean State Transit in Rhode Island. You know, I've said all along, we've had a good working relationship that my experience with other bus companies, when there's a transition in a community, has been very challenging, very difficult. And we had a very, very, very smooth transition this year. I mentioned to Mr. Murgau that many of our staff were very impressed that during the first week of, you know, the buses coming to our schools, he was visible, and they had never seen that before. You know, like I said, we were working with them and trying to, during this, this early stages of the crisis, trying to figure out how we could support them to keep their employees employed. And then there was a breakdown in communication, and then we kind of, we stopped. We did get lawyers involved, you know? And so at the end of the day, what we know is that this federal government is saying, and the governor had sent us letters saying, we have to honor contracts. So we've said all along, that $900,000 there, we may have to spend it all. Because I know people throw up, you know, somebody threw out that it was 1.4 million in savings. And, you know, we still don't have the actual number. And a lot of that is, it may sound like an excuse, but we're still closing out, we're shifting from Phoenix to Keystone. I believe that, you know, we found out that there was still some errors in Phoenix. And I don't want to come forward with a number, that's not true, right? But what I can talk about is that $900,000. And I believe that we're going to be able to negotiate a deal that'll get us off of FY20 with the bus company for around $260,000. Now, they still have to pay bus leases, they still have some overhead. And, you know, there's some things, I've, I just spoke to Tony, Mr. Murgau, right before this, you know, four minutes before the meeting started, we were on the phone. I'd sent him an email today, CC'd Sarah on it, saying that I'm willing to, we're willing to pay a certain amount that they had, you know, negotiated with us that would end FY20. And I talked to Mr. Anderson about this. If, two things, conditions, one would be that they would give us a release, so that we would say in writing that we have, this is a final invoice for FY20. And then the second one is, drawing a blank now, I don't know if you can help me, Sarah, the most
So we would get the, if they offered any better deal to any other community, that we would automatically get that lowest rate that was offered out there.
Right. And so our rate is lower than everybody else's, because they don't pay for the depot here. So that was some condition that Mr. Anderson thought, you know, we needed to get. So I spoke to Mr. Murgau, we have to resolve this tomorrow, but I believe we'll get that. And so, you know, we can come forward and saying, okay, from this $900,000, we will have, my brain's like, 600 and what, 640,000 left over from the transportation line. So we can come back and say that. Because I wasn't sure if we was going to go to litigation. And more importantly, or just as important, we need to start negotiating and talking about setting up routes. I mean, we have to, routes come out of our, we give them the list out of our ASPEN, our student information system. We also, and I should have said this in the reentry plan, we also plan on sending out a more specific survey, then you'll see later on, asking parents to opt into transportation. The only way we'll get savings is if we eliminate some of the elementary bus routes. And we've had about, you'll see in the survey, about 60% of the parents said that they would still take advantage of transportation. But we want to try to narrow that down. Again, we're not leveraging, they have a right to transportation. If you saw some of the guidance from the government, from even the state, they're talking about, you know, you know, forcing parents to transport, they're talking about forcing carpooling, which, think about it, we're trying to keep stable groups. And yeah, we're going to have parent A pick up Johnny Smith over here, and Sally Sue over here, and it doesn't make sense. They're talking about us contracting with coaches, talking about us paying parents to transport. But there's only, you know, like, we don't have the money to go from But there's only, you know, like, we don't have the money to go from point A to point B, we're going to stop piling this on. So we're going to try to see what we can do with transportation because my gut is that when push comes to shove, there'll probably be many parents that would decide to transport instead of putting their children on buses. But the only way we'll find out is to do that opt-in type of survey, which we'll do next week. But it has to be specific, it can't just, because we have to know, you know, how many children they have, what grades they go to school. So it's, it's, we have to make sure, and we have to make sure that everybody gets the survey. Well, it doesn't mean anything if we're missing individuals. So we have to make sure that our, our lists are current. So we, you know, and that's just one little thing that we have to do, but it's very important. So again, I keep, I know I keep putting it off, but you know, we don't have all of our, our figures yet. But this was the largest area where we're going to have savings, you know, and I'm not, I'm not trying to skirt the issue. But I'm not going to put Ms. Mandrelli on the spot when she can't give us the answers. And we're not trying to hold back. You know, and when we get into the next conversation, you know, you'll see that, you know, as Sarah's always said, no matter what we have for savings, we should be using them not for personnel, not for things we're going to need reoccurring, but they should be for things that we could do one-time purchases for, you know? Like if we had to purchase modulars and they cost 125,000 apiece and we have to get seven of them, right? People can do the math, that's something you could use, or that, you know, the town's talking about, well, we use a rainy day funds. We can't use rainy day funds for our day-to-day operations. Because while some people think this is going to go away, maybe in January, there are other people that say this could be, we could be living this way for a long time. And so we just have to, in my role, I can't put all my eggs in one basket and say, this is going to end in January. We have to be thinking long-term. So, but the good news is that we have potential that we can walk away from this transportation where we could have been on the hook for 900,000 and go for litigation, which could have eaten up quite a bit, where we can walk away for 260,000. That we believe is, is fair. And so that's the biggest part that I wanted to say about FY 20. And Sarah, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, so I just, I want to be clear that us not having final numbers right now is, is no different than any other fiscal year. So we typically accrue back to June 30th up until the end of August, with the bulk of it being recorded back by the first accounts payable check run in August. Usually that's when there are no other invoices from encumbrances that, that may be coming in. But really, you know, we'll have an updated projection for June at the next school committee meeting. We're doing another check run, so all those totals will, will be updated. But this is also when we're closing out grants. So we need to go through every single grant and make sure that something didn't accidentally get posted to the general fund when it should have been covered with grants. I will say that we are being extra cautious that if we think that it can be covered by a grant, maybe we had originally planned to budget X and out of the, or pay for X out of the grant, but we think Y is, is acceptable as well. We will be shifting as many expenditures, you know, following all, all requirements of the grant into that to really maximize what we can in the general fund. I also just received today a preliminary closeout for school lunch. So I believe in the last schedule, I had about $200,000. It's looking like our share will be about $150,000. So that's coming in. We're still getting retiree stipends that we will have to pay out as part of the contractual retiree stipend. So those we're still processing, that's another item that I'll adjust. But as we get closer and closer to the end of the year and the final invoices start coming in, we can start releasing some of those encumbrances, which keep our expenditures potentially higher, in some situations lower than what we thought. So it's, I just want to make sure that this isn't abnormal. It's actually a little bit more of a nuance this year because of the ransomware. So when we were down, we were posting everything into accounts, especially grants, into general fund accounts because we were using an account system from 2016 that, or 2017, because that's what we could pull. And then we had to go back and make sure we moved all of those grand expenditures back to the right account. So the ransomware actually would probably delay this, but we're doing our best to make sure we can expedite the, the closeout. So we will have updated numbers, again, preliminary at the July 24th meeting. But some things are looking to our favor, such as the school lunch, you know, it's, it's still a significant deficit. But the overall deficit was about $250,000 when we were projecting originally over 315,000. So that's kind of where we stand in FY 20 and what we're, what we're looking at going through. I do also want to note for the school committee that we did transition to the new software for July. We're doing our next check run in the new software next week, fingers crossed. We've had some glitches with it. The bigger concern is that our old software, we now have no support. So we still have the software up and running, we'll still be closing out FY 20, but we don't have anybody that we can call. And that we had to do on, on quite a regular basis because of the glitchiness of the, of the software. So we're hoping that we get through everything and we're switching audit firms. So, which is a little bit painful, but when a new audit firm comes in, they do like to scrutinize. So I think we'll, we'll have a really clean set of books. It's just might take us a little bit longer, but we are pushing as fast as we can to get that number closed out.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Craig. I'll start with Dave. Do you have any questions or comments for either Mr. Levis or Mrs. Mandrelli?
None at all, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Dave. Luke, do you have anything, any questions?
So I'll start with the buses, though. Just so I understand, did, did the bus company apply for PPP grant when they?
So they are adamant that they are not eligible for PPP money. They're also, you know, they are eligible for tax credits, but I think that's, that's at the corporate level. So they're eligible for tax credits, I believe, dollar for dollar for what they paid for unemployment.
Right. And I know that we had switched over to new buses, which they purchased specifically for our contract.
Right.
And they carried that overhead and the leases. So, and I, and I point this out mainly because, and we are going to need transportation, right?
Right.
So I point this out to those who probably say, well, why would you be giving this company any money, right? As a school district, we still have to transport kids come fall. We did make obligations under that contract for the buses, on the propane buses and also the overhead that they, they banked on as a business, right? And we're trying to still not bankrupt business. I like the stipulation that if another district gets a better deal, that we get that deal. Because I think that's fair, especially since we put a lot of faith in them going with a brand-new transportation company and at a, at a little bit higher rate, but having more security in those buses. It sounds like that's a fair approach. I'm glad to hear that we may recoup some savings out of that. I do remain concerned. I, I know it's tough with the books and everything else. We are going to encounter a lot of questions in the school committee on what savings we're going to have. So hopefully we can get that sooner than later. And that's not the push, I know you have a million things. But it's nice to have those answers. But I do want to remind everybody, we can talk about this under the 21 scenarios. But even if we recoup savings, it's not going to be used, it can't, that is a one-time savings. It might be used for some of the COVID-related one-time uses, but it's not going to backfill ongoing structural holes that we have in the budget. So regardless, everyone keeps looking for these savings. Even if we come out, we say we're lucky enough to, let's say, come recoup 1.8 million in savings. That may backfill the hole temporarily, but it creates, we're still going to have that structural deficit moving forward. So I think the bottom line is even though we don't have the numbers right now, and I know you're driving them, we have to plan as if we're not going to have any, right? For the most part. So, Sarah, the school lunch program, you've mentioned 150. Are you, does that sound like that's going to be a closeout number for this past year? And, and what are we looking at going forward?
Yeah, so that does sound like that that's going to be the closeout. I just received the information from 2, at 2:30 today. So that was the presentation that was put together. So I just need to compare the, it was an email to what our final operating statement was to make sure that I agree with all the numbers. But assuming that their calculation is correct, then yes, you know, that would be the final closeout. As far as next year, that is in discussion in our area of the task force, which is the operations and resources. A lot of the guidance is looking like we would be mostly looking at lunch in classrooms, just from a gathering perspective, as well as the cleaning requirements between changes of staple groups. So that will pose some additional costs potentially on the district for supervising. But it also may be able to reduce some expenditures on the school lunch side. However, I'm extremely concerned that we could be looking at probably a 60% decrease in our revenue in the school lunch program. Because if it's a pre-ordering scenario, or you're walking down and grabbing something quick, we will probably lose out on a lot of à la carte sales. That's where somebody just wants to add something to their meal that they bought. Or the kids that know they have money on the account that say, eh, I don't feel like eating my lunch today, I want to go buy lunch because I like what's on the menu. So, you know, while I'm, I'm hoping that we can have some savings on the expenditure side, which we needed to pre-COVID, we definitely didn't need a 60% drop in revenue sales. But a lot will have to shift, that the main focus will be making sure the kids have proper nutrition as opposed to coming up with really creative menu ideas and trying to introduce all sorts of new fruits and vegetables and all of those things that the school lunch program has added to the, as a value to students. The main focus now is truly making sure that the students are fed in accordance with USDA guidelines. So I'm nervous on the revenue side of that, but we are working. Kristin Morello is, from Sedexo, is on the task, or is in our task force group. So she's been participating. I met with her for a while today. So we will be able to work through the budget. But that continues to be an area of concern. We thought it would loosen up our expenses, but we definitely weren't, we didn't walk it through all the way about looking at what it will do to the revenues. And just if I may add, on, on the transportation side, about half of the settlement cost is the fixed bus payment cost. So that is, you know, that is the cost for our buses, that are, are new buses, which again, is the good thing because next year, if a bus breaks down, which happened a lot with our old fleet, our ability to quickly get a new bus to populate it without it being cleaned would have been an issue. So I'm glad that we have a new fleet going into this. And, and also to share that Ocean State has really worked with Coventry Schools. I'm hearing from some of my peers that they are running into a lot of issues with their transportation contracts. Even the timing of when their managers will come back to help them plan routes. And, and we have been fortunate enough, I think, hopefully through open dialogue, that we haven't had that pushback from the, from the transportation contract. So that's a really big thing for us.
And I know that they were wet fueling the buses, there was a lot with that. So that's understood. Last, last quick question, the audit firm that was selected for the town?
So, and I'm sorry, my dogs are barking, but we have Bloom Shapiro coming in. So I've had some email communications back and forth. A reputable firm, you know, they're, all of the firms that bid were reputable. I reviewed with the town and, and ultimately the town made the, made the decision. But truly, I didn't have a concern with any, with any of the firms. I, I think it was a good move to switch to a new firm. We had had the previous firm for several years. So really turnover in an audit firm is a good thing. It's a lot of extra work on administration because like I said, they love to come in and, and, you know, start from scratch. But that's, that is a good thing for, for the community as a whole, I think, to, to do a transition, even though not the best year.
Yeah, and I know it is a lot of work, it's going to ask for a lot of stuff because they're, they're not the ones who've done it year after year. But I think for the community to understand that the benefit of an audit like that is, especially with a new firm, they're going to deep, deep this year. And while the ransomware wreaked havoc, we're turning over our books with the new software. Hopefully next year, we'll be in a very, a much better place, we'll have the new software implemented, we'll have clarity in the audit. And I, and I'm looking forward to that audit that comes out of this year. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Luke. Donna, did you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I just want to know, have you looked in, are we eligible for any of the federal money out there?
So really, the only federal money that will be eligible for is what's coming through the states. Really, the KRS Act is our, is our big pot of money. I hope that if there is another stimulus package, that money will be targeted for, for government. And actually, I'm glad you brought that up because as it stands right now, you know, at the last meeting, I said that the state cut our June aid by $603,000. And then they're backfilling that with federal money. But we still, to this date, have not received the application to even apply for that money. So we had to notify the town, of course, to let them know that cash flow is going to be tighter in June because of our short $623,000. The word that I'm getting from RIDE is that we will be able to record the federal revenue when that comes back, back to FY 2020, which is interesting because of the timing of it. It, it'll be interesting if that's actually what happens or if we end up showing a loss in FY 20 and showing all of that federal revenue in FY 2021. But no, as of right now, that's the only money that we're truly eligible for.
I, I was just curious because they're sitting on all of this federal money. And basically, I think that with everybody having to put so much in place for COVID, you know, I mean, they could kind of dole it out to the, the schools a little bit. That's just my comment.
Yeah, and, and one other concern that I have with the federal money, because, and this is how the, the ERA funds, the Obamacare, American Recovery Reinvestment Act of funds were handled, is that they were very focused on jobs reporting. So when they gave money, we had to go through this whole rigmarole about how we created new jobs, even though the state cut us, you know, all of this money for people we had on payroll. And then we somehow had to justify how it was a creation or a savings of a job to use those federal funds. That hasn't come out in the guidelines yet. However, the guidelines that are coming out are that it is supposed to be used to cover increased expenses for COVID. While in FY 20, we didn't have increased expenses for COVID, we had a loss of revenue from the state. So I'm hoping that some of the holdup is them tweaking the language to make sure that when we apply for these federal funds, we're applying for it in a, a proper fashion. You know, some of that supplement versus some planting, I, it seems like it's going to go away. But we will need to be able to justify why we move expenses from the general fund to this new federal grant fund in accordance with COVID response. And that's a tough one when we're also showing a savings in the general fund. So hopefully that's what they're working on in the application and it's not more confusing when they release it.
Thank you, Sarah. Okay, thank you, Donna. And finally, James, do you have any questions or concerns?
Lots of concerns, no questions at this time. Thank you.
All right, thank you for those reports. We'll be looking forward to seeing the final numbers, obviously. But you've got a lot of work before you, and good luck with that new software. And hopefully it's going to be seamless and will be a, a good investment that the town made. Okay, so are there any hands raised? Does anybody from the public want to ask any questions?
There are no hands.
All right, thank you, Mr. Murphy. That being said, I think we can move to the next item, agenda item number seven, which is the F21 budget recommended cuts, which was our reference number four.
So, Mr. Murphy, I'm going to ask you to hold off on that slide. I want you to put up pretty soon. I'm going to try to share a screen myself in a, in a couple of minutes. I just want people to understand, when we talk about finances, we talk about budget, I always start off and kind of frame it a bit. I feel like as superintendent, it's my role, but the person everybody wants to listen to is our Director of Finance, Ms. Mandrelli. And I think that's important because she's the expert. My concern about what's transpired in the whole My concern about what's transpired in the whole FY 21 and, and I'm going to preface this by saying I have no ill regard for, personally for the interim town manager. Um, I think Mr. Arnett is a fantastic, you know, he's a young, first time in municipal. We have a phenomenal relationship with him. I know Sarah and, and John were extremely close together. Through this whole process publicly, and you, you know, you've been there, we've met with the council four times. Right? Only one, and I know Dr. Dixon's here. Dr. Dixon's the only individual that asked questions. And we never heard publicly the council or the interim town manager refer to the finance director in terms of what his thoughts were. And so I've, I've sat here um, in our meetings when we've been at the town hall, when we've been virtual and talked about how we work closely together. And, you know, I, I feel that I, I always try to take the high road and, and you know, maybe sometimes I, I, I let my emotions get the best of me. But I feel that as a community, it's time now. This community has to make some decisions. What I'm going to talk about in a couple of minutes is the last thing we want to do. We worked hard. Talk about the high school polarizing. Look at the feedback around the graduation and how we as a community, nothing's been perfect. There are students and families and staff that has struggled. But we have worked hard to come together as one, to support one another. You look at our task force, it's community, right? We have the chief of, the, the fire chief, we have two police officers, Department of Human Services Substance Abuse Task Force. We have individuals that work with private agencies. Um, and we have a lot of, you know, what, staff. And don't forget, we have 50% of our employees live in Coventry. And so, you know, I say, it's a city of time, superintendent is, we've done everything we needed to do. Even with the, the town council president and interim town manager, both agreed they were going to support our budget pre-COVID-19. Nothing's changed. As I mentioned before, if there was to be level funded, that's $1.8 million that they agreed we needed moving forward. Right? We're talking about this money that we're supposed to get CARES Act and Ms. Clooney had asked a good question. We're not eligible for anything other than what money is given to us. The governor came out and I think she's done a great job. I wouldn't want to be in her position. I don't want to be in my position. Can't imagine being the governor, right? And yet we were told we're going to give $42 million and then there was another $50 million. And Sarah and I had this conversation, that $42 million, lo and behold, was just backfilling state aid. So with stipulations, so you take $630,000 away from us, you put $630,000 in the budget. But we, now we're going to have stipulations that may not align with our budget, what, what we had identified those $630 for. And now we've gotten $720,000, right? So if we were to be level funded, we know that moving forward, it's going to cost us millions. Like there's no way around it. I'm not just throwing a number. When we put these spreadsheets together, you will see. Even distance learning, we need to purchase more Chromebooks. We're, we're working on Chromebooks that are what, over six years old, I think? Close to six years, seven years old, the, the first um, series of Chromebooks, something like that, right?
That's correct. They're six years old.
Right. I mean, they, yeah, I mean, and if we do something moving forward, this isn't like we find out on a Friday, Friday the 13th. And lo and behold, the 23rd of March, we're up and running. We have to plan now and you know, there was somebody who posted a question about, glad to hear that we're really going to look hard at our special ed population, how we can service them better if we're into distance learning. It's our responsibility to do that and we have some time to do that. Um, not a lot of time, but there's a lot, even in distance learning, we're going to need to invest a lot more. So I'm frustrated. Um, I feel that the council and the town manager, interim town manager should have at least put our budget forward. We talk about transparency, you know, think about all the conversations have been out there about the economy. And all the time it's taken, you know, to, to reopen the economy and all that. Think about all that conversation. Well, I think our children are just as important to the future of our, our, our country and our world as the economy is. We were given a plans or a template on June 19th. In less than a month, we're supposed to have a plan to get kids back and staff back, everybody back in school safely, right? Yet, the council has not even allowed the community to vote on that, you know? And what I'm going to say is if I, if I lived in town, and I don't, but I, I think I spend a lot of time here. I spend most of my money that I have here. You know, I definitely would, would be voting the budget down that's coming up. You know, we're putting together a presentation. Sarah's really done the work. I think I've contributed to one slide. But we're going to work on that tomorrow and I'll share that with the school committee, obviously before we have the FTM. But we've done everything we can do to pull, pull this community together. Um, we owe it all, not just to our staff and administration, but our families and our students have been phenomenal. A lot of our community partners. And yet, we have three council members that aren't even going to be around after election. And then there's one that's up for, for, for reelection. So we could have four new council members, you know? And I want to applaud Dr. Dixon, not trying to toot her horn, but I, I didn't go on Nextdoor, but I heard that she's actually asked people to vote the budget down. You know, she made a stellar pitch to try to get people to support the school. And, and I thought she had some good arguments about why education is important. If the status of our community, of our, of our, our state, of our country, isn't a reason why we need to invest in, in the youth, I don't know what is. And so what I'm going to present first, if I can do this, is
Before you get to, just before you get to the
I'm not going to that slide that you think I am.
Okay.
Don't worry. So can you see that? Can everybody see what I put up here? Can you see the town council? Right? I'm not going to go here and, and you know, and sell people's intelligence. CoventryRI.org forward slash town hyphen council, right? I'm asking people, if you have, you're going to have a lot of problems with what I present next. I have a lot of problems. This is the group of individuals that need to be spoken to. I don't know what else to say and I'm not trying to pass the buck here. I'm willing to do whatever I can do, our staff, our community, many community members. I've read individuals that, you know, people have shared screenshots of people posting about, you know, how the schools have been, you know, you know, the, the council has been pretty much, you know, I'm paraphrasing here, but negligent in terms of education. You know, I, I appreciate, you know, Ms. Bacon, I was listening to their conversation and said, you know, even with the 1.8, she acknowledged we're not going to have enough money, which is actually, which is very true. But we can't even get to the starting line. So I just want to scroll this. I'm not trying to grandstand here. But these individuals, I haven't heard anything out there other than these posts. You know, I'm in the community every day. You know, I believe this community cares about the, about, you know, the community as a whole. I had a conversation with a parent the other day. We want, they want people that are elected that care about the entire Coventry community. Not just education, not just the sewers, not just the wind turbines, but this community, right? I've said before, when houses are going up for sale, they're selling above market price. There's bidding wars in every community, every uh, district in Coventry, especially the $300,000 to $500,000 homes. Oh, look, talk to a realtor. My daughters and, and her husband are buying a house in Swansea and a realtor lives in Coventry. And she was, I met her when they did the inspection, saying houses go up, they're sold, there're bidding wars. So people are moving here. You know, we're working on improving our test scores. We, you know, we've seen that, we do that by curriculum work that we've highlighted tonight and professional development for staff and students. And we've been working on that. We have a culture that I believe in our community is second to none. And yet, all the work we've done, all the transparency, all the communication, it stopped at, you know, the interim town manager and the council. And they didn't even have the courtesy, you know, I take it as if people that have families aren't considered taxpayers in this, this town. I don't know who the, the select population that they talk about is, but Coventry is made up of 40,000 individuals, 25,000 voters. And so this is the group of people, and obviously there are elected officials here, our school committee members. But remember, our school, school committee voted 5-0 and stood the ground that this is the budget we needed. And we had zero pushback. So I just want to show these, you know, and again, like I said, Dr. Dixon, I thank you for supporting us. But you know, because my understanding now, Mr. Cody is going to, going to leave. And I'm not sure, I don't know the political process, but like I said, to put forward something, to not even allow the community, the taxpayers to vote on a budget, um, to put us in a position where I have to say, I can't tell you how to vote. Right? But if it was me and knowing how damaging this will be, I can tell you, I don't see how we will get out of that hole, at least in my tenure here. I don't see how it'll be devastating to this community. Uh, and I believe the same on the town side also. But I'm, I'm not a municipal, I'm not a finance person, but I am a superintendent. So I'm done sharing. But this is the group of people that need to hear from the community. So Sarah, you were going to say something before I put up the, the slide that I don't want to show?
Yeah, no, um, so I just, before we get into it, I just wanted to, to touch base, to make sure everybody's really clear on, on how we're looking at the budget process for FY 21. Because on one hand, we're looking at how we could potentially cut out an additional $1.8 million from our operations. On top of the 1.5 million we've already cut out to get to that ask of 1.8 million. And at the same time, building a COVID response budget that under best case scenario is at least $1 or $2 million based on preliminary numbers. Um, and, and you will have, when we roll that out, it will be a very easy to read budget template showing the exact quantities and FTEs and exactly what areas. Um, but it, it's, it's almost, it's such a bizarre budget to be building while we're trying to cut operations and add at, at the same exact time. Um, so I just wanted to point that out and then also to share that I have been cautioning all along that the state aid cut that we have was pre-COVID. And it didn't make sense that the state would have to cut their education aid in FY 20 and not have to do anything in FY 21. So while nothing has come out yet, our July and August payments have been reduced to 91%. So the Department of Ed was instructed by the Budget Office to reduce July and August payments to 91%, which is the FY 20 funding level for education. Hopefully that is just because they need more time to get their budgets together and present it out. But I am concerned if that sticks, that that reduction um, would be 91% of our FY 21 projected aid, which would be an additional $2 million cut. So I, I want to put that out there that I, I still don't think we're out of the woods. Even if we came up with that $1.8 million, I still think that there's more to come. Um, and, and again, then, then we have the COVID response requirements on top of our regular operating costs. So that was really the only thing that I wanted to share before you put up this picture. You're muted.
Yeah, I know. Probably, probably a good thing I'm muted, right? Um, so Mr. Murphy, if you don't mind putting up, so this is if the budget gets approved, that's level funds us. This is, um, so you can look at this. Basically, what we'll, will have is students will come to school, they will go home, if we're in school, full time. Um, or the hybrid model. There'll be no after-school activities, nothing. Buildings won't be open, any league, any after-school program that wanted to use it, we're not discriminating because they're closed to everybody. This is the worst thing that we can do. But we are, you know, again, I'm hoping that this won't happen. I'm hoping that there's a community values education and understands the value that a solid, vibrant school department has in a community. You know, this, this defeats. I, I see a lot of people in here that, you know, that are watching this meeting that I've had personal interactions with in a variety of different, you know, with their, with their children and understanding all that value added, that comprehensive school district cats. You know, there's, there's no opportunity here just to say, well, we're going to support the ROTC or we're going to support football or those days. That's over. Like that, that's over. You know, and
Can I just speak to?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I just want to speak to um, just a couple of the items on here. Um, and why we, we wouldn't have necessarily usually pulled them out. So one of the examples is the SRP six and a half hour TAs. Those were based on preliminary phasing out of students or um, with special needs, um, whether it be graduating out or leaving district. Typically, we don't pull all of those out of the budget because it's usually a guarantee that once we get into the year, we're, we're looking to add those right back in. Um, the next one right below it, and I know Jim, if you want to speak to this one after I introduce it a little bit, you can. So we were up for our third round of Chromebook leasing. The last round that we did was over $900,000. And that included the Chromebooks, the cases and the warranty. If you remember, the first time that you went out to bed for the Chromebook leases, you tried to do a self-insurance model. Um, you actually had a person in the finance department that was, half of her time was allocated just chasing down the insurance claims and reporting them. Um, and then we also lost, which I believe it was my first year here, we had to clean up that fund. It had a deficit of it, um, in the end balance of over $80,000, trying to do the self-insurance. It was really not a great um, option for insuring those modules. So the current one we have is a fully insured model on those Chromebook devices that we have, and it's operated much better. Unfortunately, we can't buy just the fully insured option for the existing Chromebooks. And also, um, and Jim, this is where if I miss, misspeak, please correct me. Um, I believe in FY 20, 22, they won't be supported, so we will need to look to change over those devices regardless. What we had talked about, and this was um, a very lengthy conversation with IT and curriculum, um, to look at how we could restructure that lease. Because we know that we have some significant infrastructure needs in our technology world. Um, that hasn't been, you know, touched since it was installed in the wireless, wireless classrooms. You know, I, I believe in the late 90s was when a lot of that wiring was done. Currently, we have E-rate funding available through the federal government that expires this year, um, FY 2021, which would give us 50% back in whatever we spend to have those wiring, um, infrastructure updates done. So we had really looked at the Chromebooks and said, where can we scale back to get that lease down from the $900,000 that had been financed the previous year? And we got it down to about $650,000. We did not reduce the budget to make up for that change in the payment. Um, we, we financed it over three years from the $900,000 to $600,000 because we wanted to take advantage of that E-rate funding before it disappears. So our goal was to reduce that capital lease down, um, use that one-time savings in that lease payment to put our 50% share in to getting some of this networking done. So um, by pulling this out, we are also saying we are letting go of the 50% federal reimbursement. So when we go to do this again, it's going to be at the full cost of the district. Um, you know, so these are some of the decisions that on the surface, it says, oh, we'll just get rid of that, that line. But we were truly trying to strategize and, and stretch every penny that we had, knowing that this opportunity might not come back around in this magnitude again. So Jim, if there's anything that you want to add on that?
No, I think you, you pretty much said it all. Um, the, the HP devices that we have currently at grade six to 12 officially reached the end of life in two years. So what we were hoping to do was get devices and to use some of the funds to take advantage of E-rate to um, revamp the wireless infrastructure, at least at the high school and the middle school. And then move on down as we have funding. But um, removal of this will not only take the Chromebooks away, but it'll also take away us getting 50% reimbursement on what we would have invested in that infrastructure.
Right. And so, and, and just to be clear, even though we're taking away that financing, if we're going to continue to use the devices we have, we will have to look out, look to go out to bed in some fashion for insurances um, to cover those devices because they are broken and damaged and, and we're responsible um, for making sure that kids have devices to use, especially in a virtual environment. Um, so we will, that will be the next step. If this goes through and we make those cuts, we will have to um, look to see how we can ensure those devices as well. So I think those were the real big things. I think everything else is, is relatively self-explanatory. The top lines for the The top lines for the extracurriculars and stipends, and then the bottom lines are more in the non-personnel expenditures. And as you can see, we're still only at 1.6 million. So we still have a little more ways to go. But there's not much left in the budget that we can start really pulling out.
Mr. Levis, did you want to add anything before we ask?
Yeah, I mean, I, I just think it's, you know, just the fact that we have to have this conversation. You know, I, last year was a completely different year, people trying to compare the two. Last year, you know, initially, just 700 and some odd people supported the municipal and the, in the school budget. And I know there's always been concerns or conversations about separating the two. But, you know, what's ironic is our goal all along had been to work together as one. In fact, we had even had conversations up until a couple of months ago about how the interim town manager and I were gonna present the budget together. And then, you know, obviously, we know these are crises, we know this is impacting everybody. There's nobody that this isn't impacting. But at the end of the day, we still have a job to do, we still have a community to care for. And, you know, putting your head in the sand and saying this will be over in January, and, oh, we can use rainy day funds, you know, if we need to, well, that doesn't help us. We need our core, you know, with our staffing and, and what we put forward, that 1.8. You know, the last thing I'll say is that the last meeting that we had, and, and Ms. Mangiorelli, back me up here, please, if you, if you so choose, the town, interim town manager had offered our loss, what was approximately $900,000 in state aid, and said, he was considering giving us $900,000. Hence why I said I felt blindsided. And all I said is that, you know, I, I've never said we don't need the 900, we wouldn't take it. I don't have the right to say no. But I wanted to be clear that that 1.8 we put forward is what we needed. So, you know, I had heard that, and again, this, I, I'm not even gonna say what I heard, but when I saw that they were leveled, when I heard it was level funding, recommending, that's the blind side. Like, you just had a conversation a few days ago where you were considering at least giving us the cut in state aid. So, you know, I have a lot of things I'd like to say. But I think it's really time for the community to speak. And, and I, you know, not even, I'm not even talking tonight. I mean, we have the Financial Town Meeting, which unfortunately, I don't even know what that's gonna be like. I'm supposed to find out tomorrow. You know, which isn't good. I'd rather have posted the agenda and let the school committee know. We will be sharing our presentation. I'm not sure what the format's gonna be. I assume it's gonna be a Zoom meeting, but I, I don't know for a fact. So I think it's really time, I'm hoping that this community, the rally, everything that took place, I, you know, I, I, you know, and I've always said this, I believe if it wasn't for Mrs. Aronakis and, and her rallying people, I don't know if there's anybody else that could have done that. And I know it's up to the community now to step up, and, and they have in many ways. But, you know, I have no problem, people need to hold me accountable. They need to hold the school committee accountable. They need to hold the other side of the street accountable too. I don't know how we could be more transparent. So I don't want to go on anymore, I'm, I'm done. This is disgusting to have to put this up. I mean, I don't know how else to describe it. But this will be our reality. And, and then how are we gonna come up with all these other funds to, you know, with Sarah? You know, in fact, this first time, you know, like, I was aware of that, and you probably sent me an email, talked to me, but $2 million potential? That's ridiculous, you know? We need to, we're not even at the starting line. The 1.8 gets us to the starting line, so I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Levis. Okay, Mr. Florio, comments?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I have some comments. You know, I, I was warned about this about three weeks ago, that a member of the council was speaking to a father of an ROTC parent who happened to be also a police officer, and saying that, you know what? Florio's gonna have to cut the ROTC. And I didn't know what he was talking about until now, until Mr. Levis's presentation. And, you know, cutting extracurricular clubs, cutting athletics after we hired a new football coach. These are draconian, these are draconian cuts that the council is making at their own whim. This would never have happened pre, pre-2013. This never happened. This happened because the Charter Review Commission decided to change the rules and have us present our budget to the county, to the town manager, and the town manager to the council. And since then, the council has reneged on their fiduciary responsibility to the schools. And this is, you know, there's nothing, this is not Mr. Levis's fault, this is not our fault. This is the count, this, this accountability lies at the council level, not the school committee level. I just want to put that out there, Madam Chair, because we're, we're getting blamed for things that we haven't even decided on and we don't even know about. But the council seems to know about this. They seem to already know what the cuts were gonna be and what was gonna happen. And they haven't, and they don't care. They don't care, Madam Chair. That's why they're all bailing out. They don't, not all of them, Mrs. Bacon's staying on and Dr. Dixon's staying on. But this is, all I can think of is, this is just a shot against the school committee and against the superintendent. And someone's, someone's taking what happened last year extremely personal, which is why I'm going to discuss with Mr. Murray a charter review submission. And that's it, that's all I have to say, Madam Chair.
Muted, Karen. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Murray?
Can I respectfully request to put my comments at the end?
Sure. I, I saw that flash across my screen really quickly, but I didn't see, I didn't see the whole thing. Sorry. Okay, Donna, any comments?
I, I'm speechless, I, I just am. Like, like you said, Mr. Levis, you know, these kids, they're just gonna basically go to school and come home. And, you know, that's not a good experience, I'm sorry. And, and, you know, I don't think that the council supported us. I, I don't, I, I'm just speechless. I, I just don't even know where to go with this. Because it's gonna, it's gonna ruin us, it really is. You know, I mean, what child wants to go to school? We're gonna lose people, you know?
Yeah, they, this is an if. I mean, I think we have to be clear that this is only if the budget gets approved, as put forward, that's level funding. So I want to be clear, this is not a threat, this is just, this is what we will need to do. But don't forget, we still need to figure out how we're gonna get back into school. This just, all this does is get down, so I mean, you know, that...
It just makes it worse, it really does. It, it, it makes it, not only you have to figure out, you gotta get back into school, now you've got all these cuts that you have to make if that budget passes.
Yeah, and why, why would anybody want to come into a community if this gets approved? And, I mean, all these houses that are going for sale in Coventry? I mean, like I said, I look at the real estate almost every day. People are moving in here with families because of the culture and I think our reputation, well-deserved in terms of the culture and climate in our schools. But, so I, I want to be clear, this is an if.
Oh, I know it's an if. But the thing is, is that if that budget passes, then this is what happens. And I can't imagine paying $500,000 for a house in Coventry and not having a good school system for your kid. And it's not for anybody's fault, it's not anyone on this panel right now. It, it's, you know, it's because when, when it comes to funding the schools, they say, no, you don't need it, you don't need it. And, and I'm just, I'm done, I really am. It's, I'll do what I need to do to get the budget to fail. And then we're back at the drawing board, then hopefully, you know, the council will listen. But that's all I have to say, I, I'm disgusted, I'm just...
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Clooney, and Mr. Dutton?
Yep, a few comments here. I'll be brief. First comment is, it's not up to the council yet, voters have the say. So encourage everyone listening, everyone who watches this on replay, everyone we need to reach out to through various, you know, communication channels. Please attend the Financial Town Meeting and really speak your mind of what you envision the upcoming budget should be. And then equally, if not, no, you know what, more importantly, get out there and vote. But, but it's so important to go to the FTM and tell us and tell the council what you're thinking. The feedback is very important. Not that the feedback during the school committee meetings is not important, but we tend to draw a specific type of audience. So FTM draws a different kind of audience. And whether we agree or disagree with the speakers, it's always good to hear feedback from different points of view. You have to understand what people are thinking. You can't just formulate ideas in your own head and, and think you're right all the time. Wow, I'm a politician and I said that. Second point on this, to reiterate something I keep saying, and I'm gonna keep saying it until I'm out of breath. Dr. Dixon, in April, published a town manager update in which it was clearly stated that he was going for a 0% budget. This was repeatedly brought up and, and denied, I guess, is, is what I'm hearing. But, but keep in mind, you know, is there more we could have done? I mean, I don't know how many more flags we have to raise. We have, not only are we losing several council members, but I've also heard Mr. Wazika is, he's, he's announced that his days are numbered as well. He is planning to retire. So the people who have created the budget, most of them who have voted on the budget are saying, so long, good luck. And is that acceptable for the community or not? They will decide during the all-day referendum. Third point on this is kind of a comment to what Donna said, the if, and even the if is an if. And what does that mean? It means there's been a list of suggested cuts presented. And it, it will be our duty as school committee members to challenge that list and not rubber stamp it. Those lists are heavily, in my opinion, targeted towards causing maximum disruption to students where maybe some of it, this is a big maybe, without getting into specifics yet because we're not there, maybe some of it could be deflected into other areas worthy of discussion when it's time to have that discussion. Hopefully, maybe it won't be time to have that discussion. And, and the vote, and the budget, maybe we'll, we'll go back for another round. Again, taxpayers have the final say. I will leave it at that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. And finally, Mr. Murray?
I'm gonna start out with a few things for our finance director, because as the superintendent has so aptly pointed out, we haven't heard from Mr. Arnett, who's the town-side expert on the finances. I heard very little from him during the process. Would have liked to heard more on his opinion on where the budget stood, for the reason I'll elaborate on later. Sarah, so what I'm hearing and what you presented, and I, and I didn't hear it while, I apologize, was that essentially, we're going to lose, potentially lose, if this budget goes down, if it is one of our cuts, a 50% reimbursement. We, we would leave that on the table if we made one of these cuts. I'm looking at the line item under lease payments and wiring, is that correct? And that would be a $290,000 leave on the table?
Correct, so yes, yes, we would lose that federal E-rate money. And it's a 50% match, yes.
And I point that out as, these are the difficult decisions we're gonna make when we pit sports against leaving $300,000 on the table when we have to make these cuts, right? So, so as Mr. Pearson so aptly pointed out, we're gonna have to make some hard decisions. And these aren't easy ones, so parents need to understand that. I know what's gonna happen after this, we presented these tonight, this happens, this happened in the past, we'll be accused of threatening the district, and it's all about the kids, and, and we're gonna threaten the people into a budget. It's not a threat, I've said before, I mean, I trust the administration, I will push back, as Mr. Pearson also said, I do think there's some things we might be able to whittle out. But in the end, it's tough to whittle out $1.8 million out of a budget. And a lot of people say we have a $70 million budget, should be able percentage-wise to do that. But most everything else in our budget is fixed costs. And if anybody runs a business, you know what fixed costs mean. So we have to turn on the lights, heat the building, we have to put a teacher in front of a child in some fashion, we need technology, we need the program. So when you get through all of that, 1.8 million is a lot of money. To go towards the buildings, we talked about buildings, which we haven't reignited the school building effort again, but I do expect to get that going once budget is done. How far are we underfunded as far as our facilities, as far as our 2% maintenance effort towards our, our buildings and facilities?
So for FY20, we are about $600,000 short. You know, and we're not going to increase that at all for the next year. So we will be, you know, close to $800,000 short for FY21. And that's key, I, I know, Mr. Murray, you'll, you'll bring this up, but by not meeting that threshold, we are not eligible for housing aid reimbursement for any projects that are eligible, which is a minimum of 44%. I did request that the state review that requirement, because I do believe that was an unfunded mandate that was definitely pushed down on us in operating budgets that were already tight. But, yeah, so we will, we did not hit it in FY20, which we knew we would not. And there is absolutely no way, going for no capital in FY21, that we will come close to that, that dollar amount.
So to translate that, the $200,000 that we currently have yet to expend, if we were to expend that, we would not get the $88,000 reimbursement from this, correct? So taxpayers would essentially pay that full tab and get nothing out of it. So now we're really gonna leave another $300,000 potentially for the other. We would leave money on the table for the facility. That's good. So next, next year, looking forward, since I talk about structural, can you describe what we're probably facing? I, my initial calculations were probably upwards of $1 million in contracted obligations just next year, forget about this year. But we have a 1.5% increase, we have benefits, we always have healthcare increases, no normal inflation, we have to heat the building, everything. Can you, can you describe maybe what your thoughts are initially on that?
Right, so at a minimum, you know, just looking at an increase on the salaries and then just looking at our, our average 6% increase on healthcare, right there, that's almost 1.2 million increase for next year, which from our original FY21 ask, which includes the 1.8 million, that's about a 2.3% increase for our needs, assuming state aid was level funded for FY2022.
Thank you. So I guess that gets me to my point for the public and, and, you know, I guess to help anybody who's supportive of the school committee budget when they're talking to their neighbors is, my frustration out of this whole process is the, the council has not made sound decisions. And not only they're not making sound decisions, as Mr. Pearson pointed out, they're kicking us with, with, I called it, people call it a can, I call it a barrel. They're kicking the barrel down the road, leaving a huge crater for next year and basically saying goodbye out the door. And that includes everybody, I'm calling up town manager, everybody on the council who voted to bring this, this zero to the, to the Financial Town Meeting. And the reason is, you know, you cannot, you can, there's some people who don't feel that they support schools, and that's for certain reasons, maybe they don't have kids, maybe they don't have skin in the game. But they also cut park by $300,000, they also cut DPW. As I look at this budget based on math, data, actual analysis, there is no way any rational person could look at that budget and say, we're not gonna be facing a huge, not only challenge next year with a 4% cap, we will have to make additional cuts. The question is, where do those cuts come from? where do those cuts come from? If you've already decimated parks, and I don't care how many fees they want to raise on how many families who can't afford to pay, parks next year will probably decimate, and I'm talking zero. DPW is going to sustain further hits, and I'm sure DPW will blame school, because we take up a large share of the budget. I'm just being on. And not only that, our 1.8 million doesn't go away. We can backfill that now. But next year, to your point, we're going to be facing 1.2 million on top of the 1.8. So now we're 3.3 million in the hole. We can't make that up with the 4%, likely. I'm just guessing, you know, and we do have Sarah, who's the finance expert, I'm throwing it out there. I just, my biggest thing is that the council, not only did they not support the budget, but they didn't trust the people to make the right decision based on actual math. And that's what frustrates me the most. And I've said that multiple times in other meetings. And I guess I, I guess for anybody who's listening, you want to make the point, if you're talking to your neighbors and they don't care about schools, if they care at all about this town, and I had to listen to Gary Cody last year, talk all about, and I agree with him 100%. I use everything in this town. I love this town. I use the parks. I take my kayaks on the rivers. I tap every piece of value out of this town. And if you don't, that's your fault. But the truth is, I had to listen to him last year make that speech, and then I had to listen this year, as they didn't take a leadership role in this town, and basically put us in a really, really bad position. What's even worse is when people go to the polls and they vote this down, my understanding council is still going to be in position to pass that budget, straight out, if they choose not to bring it back to Financial Town Meeting. Because the law went through that, basically empowered them to pass that budget. And I don't want them making excuses that they'll have to do it because of timeframe. So if this goes down, I expect the public to step up and ask them to bring it back to a Financial Town Meeting. This isn't just about schools, it's about staking a line in Coventry, saying that we understand values on houses went up, and that's because we have great services, great schools, and other things that attract people. And because the house values went up, we expect to pay more. That's true. I can't, you know, I can't say tax is going to be a problem. I can say the tax rate went down this year, and it would go down a little less if they funded the 4%. Instead of going to 1897, I think it was, correct me, Sarah, if I'm wrong, 1985, if they went to a 4% increase that was published. So for a dollar on the tax rate, they're basically stripping us and down the bare bones this year, and they're playing roulette that they may, they're going to look and hope that the feds come out with some sort of stimulus. Good luck. I'm sure that's going to come with a bunch of strings attached. And it always does. So I'm very frustrated by the quote unquote, I guess, unleadership of this town, what would have been really impressive for once, and having lived in this town a long time, is for somebody to step up and say, this is the right thing to do, and explain it, and actually make some explainer videos, and educate the public, and get out there and do it. Not one of those council members did it. They showed off, didn't look at the map, and they made what they thought was an easy vote, because it's always easy to vote for zero. Nobody likes taxes. My house went up 100,000. You think I love paying more taxes? I hate it. But I appreciate the value of the town. I know if I bought my house in North Kingston, my house would be 200 to 300,000 more. So do those taxes, because I have friends who live in North Kingston, and they pay those taxes. Even though it's a lower tax rate, the house is much more. So I know there's always banter, and I know I'm taking a long time, I'm getting on a soapbox. This is the only soapbox that I have with school committee members, is to be able to just let it out. And I'm sure there's some who who share this frustration. In the end of the day, try to educate those around you, get out and vote. This year, we're not, I'm not going to, you know, scare people, these are the cuts that are on the table. If the administration says that these are the most prudent cuts that we can make, and I understand kids may not be in sports this year, but as we all know, if we make this cut, and I made the point already, this money doesn't come back, because next year we'll have to fill the 1.2 million hole, which means that we can't bring all these activities back, because we won't have the ability to raise enough funds to bring them back. So it's not just this year, and people need to understand that. This is a ripple effect that's going to happen for years to come. And we were finally starting to dig ourselves out of the hole, and Sarah's done an incredible job of paying off Pat's debt, and cleaning up the junk that everybody has left us over the past decade. So and that's to her credit. And I think to her credit, you know, she's really led the way, even at a state level, of notifying them of the things that can't be calculated on this COVID effort that Ride is asking. So we have, we have some really good professionals, and I hope people actually trust the number. Listen to our financial professional and ask Mr. Arnett what he thinks. Because I think if asked, he might tell you that, my guess is he runs the math, and he's doing the same math I am, and it just doesn't work. I apologize, Madam Chair, for my soapbox. I'm extremely frustrated by this. I'm going to continue making explainer videos, hopefully educate the public as we get near to the Financial Town Meetings, so I ask people to look out for them. And I think we all have a duty to educate everyone around us, including just moving next door to our neighbors and asking them to vote this way. Thank you.
Mrs. Glonian, did you have something to say?
I actually have a question. I was just looking at this, and you have a line item for athletics, and then you have Coventry High School athletic budget, and then middle school athletics. So what is that line item for just plain athletics? What does that entail?
Right. So the top lines are salaries and benefits for the stipends and coaches and whatnot, and officials and all of that that goes with it. And then the the other two items are in your non-personnel detailed budget. So it's just a different type of category of expense.
Yeah, I figured that it was the different line items, but I just wanted to get some part.
Yep. And I should have clarified on that. This was, this was, again, one of our, oh my goodness, we really have to put this on paper now, and looking at it. So I will make sure that, you know, when we have an idea of what our final budget is going to look like, I'll make sure that that's better explanation, for sure.
Thank you.
Mrs. Patton, may I add one comment before you go to the public?
Yes, please.
Yes. So I just wanted to go back to something Mr. Pearson said about the 0% coming out of the town, because I think that this is really an important component, is that, you know, we met with town administration very early on, showed them our numbers. If you remember, we were looking at over $3 million deficit. And in early discussions, we said, listen, we know we can't ask for more than 1.8. So that burden of making the additional cuts is going to sit on us. And we did that by going back to our unions. We did that by really narrowing down personnel, again, making additional modifications, looked at where we could do some strategic savings. You know, we have some energy savings coming in at the end of next fiscal year with more to come the following year. But our understanding was always that the town was going to be bringing forward either a zero, I think Craig, the highest that was ever discussed was a 2% ask. Knowing that the school was going to get a bulk of that appropriation share, we had to make reductions, and there were also supposed to be cost-saving measures from the town unions that took place as well. So I think when it first came out that it was a 0% that was going to be the ask, neither Craig nor I really thought anything of it, because that was always our understanding, is that we were going forward as a community budget, and that is why we had talked a lot about not doing two different presentations at a Financial Town Meeting. We are one community, and in certain years, certain areas are going to need more money. So this was a discussion that was had several times, that we were going to be making cuts, the town had some areas on their end that they were going to be making cuts, and the greater allocation was going to go to the school, and that 1.8 was recognized as a needed number by the school. So clearly COVID hit, revenue assumptions change, you know, I'm not just, I'm not saying that the discussions that we had in January, February are exactly the same as what we had in April, May. But I did, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear, that we always thought that they were going close to zero. But there was definitely a discussion that that, that the school portion needed to be that 1.8, and we were going to take measures, and the town was going to take measures too.
The information that, not to interrupt, the information that was published, published in April from the town manager's update was very clear that it would be a 0% overall town and school. So again, my only point in that is, is that either there's a severe miscommunication going on, and I'm not blaming anyone on this call, severe miscommunication going on, or or different things being said to different groups, different audiences. Don't know what the cause is that, I can only tell you what was published in April by Dr. Dixon on her Facebook page, which was a direct cut and paste from the town manager update, 0% overall budget. So something, something changed, clearly partially COVID, partially other things, but something changed, the communication didn't come to the school department clearly for some reason, but it should have. And that's my point. When I was elected, one of the first things I was elected or ran on, even though I didn't have an opponent, one of the first, one of the things I ran on was improve communication between the town department and the school department. It's been a keystone of my beliefs. And it's, you know, it goes up, it goes down, it gets better, it gets worse, it's cyclical, it depends on who's in the room, you know. But this year especially, and again, it's, it's a extreme circumstances are contributing to this, but this year, the communication doesn't seem like it's been great in that we're getting two different stories now, and now we have a 0% budget, even though you've been told, no, we were going to get the money, now we have a 0% budget. Something got lost in translation, something changed. I'm saying something changed as far back as April. That's my only point for bringing that up.
And I just add to that is that I remember specifically on a school committee meeting where you made reference to a document, not, not the document, but a document. We went back, I went back with Sarah, asked, did we, were we ever told, we were told that it was going to be a tough sell with the council. Were we ever told that the decision was made? I think you saw, maybe not, I sent an email on a Friday saying, where do we stand? And that's when I heard. And then I think I was somebody, you know, I forwarded the link, but, you know, I don't have time to go chasing things down. I ask people point blank, you know, my reputation, that's all I have. So.
Agreed, agreed. I don't want to insinuate that you miscommunicated. I'm just saying, I think, I think the story changed. I think there were two different stories going on. I don't think you were given the correct information.
No, and I, I agree. And we sat in a meeting myself, there were meetings where, you know, we sat with the leadership of the council, the town manager, and the finance director, where this whole conversation, you know, took place about the zero, and, you know, and again, I don't want to pit against the town, we're not trying to do that, this in terms of the, you know, our unions have come to the table, you know, we have to go forward, we're almost done with the other union, we need to, you know, get buy-in from other individuals. There's nothing that's happened on the town side. And that was our point. We're trying to unify this whole process, everything's about unification. And tonight, we are putting a huge stake in the ground that's going to divide, and that's the last thing that we want to do. But I have a responsibility to the future of this community, those people that are buying homes, the young children, parents that are about to register their kids for kindergarten. And, you know, I don't want to get into that. I just, the bottom line is that somebody had said, you know, posted on this, you know, hope is not a strategy. I agree wholeheartedly. It's about action, you know, and I've said that, right or wrong, we try to meet on a weekly basis. I don't see how you can have better communication. Now, what's discussed, you know, I take it face value. I try to think the best of people, and that they're going to be transparent and honest. However, right now, it's up to the community to respond. 700 and some odd people, if 8% of the population comes out and votes on Thursday, so be it, you know, we'll do what we need to do. So, you know, I don't want to, you know, I've been on a soapbox, I know other people have, it's important, but, you know, I don't even live in this community. My lights keep going on or off, I apologize. But, you know, I'm passionate. Like I said, I, our teachers love their kids, our kids love their teachers. We've pulled together through such difficult times, and then they have to deal with this, you know, it's just, it's sickening. So I agree.
Mr. Florio?
Chair, we've been through this before. Isn't this the same old game that was done in 2010? We've been through this, you have been through this before, where agreements have been made, and all of a sudden, they change, and we end up in a very bad situation. And, you know, this, this is, this just is not fair, where they have complete control over our budget, and we have no say in it, Madam Chair. And I don't, I don't think that, I don't think that's right. I really don't. And we've had this, you've had this problem, Madam Chair, a lot longer than than I've been on the committee. I've been on, I've only been on since 2013, you've been on since 2002. So you understand, you've seen councils come and go, and you've seen this. And I really want to hear what you have to say. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Florio. Yeah, I wasn't sure I was going to get a chance to talk, considering everybody's passionate comments. The only thing I really want to add is that I'm disappointed in the leadership from the town council, from our, from our town manager. It's so short sighted in my, in my view, that they didn't, didn't agree to raise taxes in some way, shape, or form. What I truly believe is that if they really are concerned that they will not get, you know, a good revenue, a good tax collection rate, I'm not sure raising taxes or not raising taxes is going to make any difference. Whatever the town raises, it will raise. So whether or not they're holding on to this thought that, you know, if we don't raise taxes, everybody's going to pay, or we'll be in less debt, or I'm not sure exactly what the thinking was. Because quite honestly, those of us who can afford to pay a small increase, basically with the new reevaluation for a lot of people, I don't understand why they wouldn't have done that, because it was the right thing to do from a, from a vision thing for this town. And to say that somehow not raising taxes is going to save us in some way, so that we can afford our bills, if our revenue stream goes down because people in the town can't afford it, I think that's faulty reasoning. And so I am very, very hopeful that the majority of the people who go out to vote will in fact vote this budget down. And again, I'm very worried that with the new law that was passed, that they will just go ahead and approve it on their own without going back to the public. So I think it really would lose everyone to stay alert to all of this, and make sure they attend the town financial meeting on the 14th, and then participate in the all-day referendum on the 16th. And that's basically all I have to say, except that I'm extremely disappointed. I think there's been a concerted effort from our side to keep communication open, and I thought we really made some headway in that area. So I'm disappointed that somehow, when people didn't agree with what we were asking for, the communication kind of stopped. So that being said, I think we can put it out to the public. Are there any hands raised?
Yes, there's a few.
Okay, if you could ask them to speak, Mr. Murphy?
Sure. All right, Galaxy S9, could you identify your name and your address, and you're free to speak? Galaxy S9?
I think that it looks like the microphone is muted.
Yep, I can unmute them. All right. So we'll move on to the next person. We want a sec.
Jim, can you ask them to unmute the microphone? Usually there's a toggle for that.
Galaxy S9, can you unmute your microphone?
You don't have a toggle to.
It won't allow me to do it. It's not letting me do it.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, we'll move on to the next person. Kelly, you could identify yourself.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Kelly Aronakis, nine Sugar Maple Drive. So I, I just want to speak to a couple of points that I heard tonight. First, Ms. Patino, you eloquently talked about the tax collection rate. I just want to remind everyone in attendance that in June, the town manager publicly at the town meeting, one of his, one of their town meetings, said the tax collection rate as of this June had exceeded the rate for last year at this time. So that is a non-issue. So I don't know who came up with that, but that was clearly stated, and I don't remember the cent, percentage, so I'm going to make it up. If we were 60% where we needed to be last year, we were 70% this year. So we are ahead this year in tax collection at the June meeting than where we were last year. So that is not an issue. I need to voice my personal frustration as a parent, as a taxpayer, as a teacher, and as a union leader. I personally sat at a meeting with the town manager, um, where he asked all unions in the town to consider opening their contract and doing give backs. That was very difficult for me to broach with my members, because teachers and school-related personnel have done that several times over the past three contracts or nine years, to the only groups that have done it. But we really talked about transparency and working together, and trying to dig each side, town and schools, out of the deficits that we were in, so we would not continue with these, as Mr. Mari talked about, the structural deficits. Because if you're down $2 million this year, and you know your bills are going up next year, you're down $3 million next year. So the comment that was made this evening, that whatever is cut will not come back, is correct. I've been around for 25 years here to see that to be a very true statement. So yet again, the teachers did give back, and I think what frustrates me most is there was a time when Mr. Raymond Speer was chair of the town council, and they were looking at closing Oak Haven Elementary School. And the teachers gave back nearly $1 million of their salaries to keep Oak Haven open. And behind the scenes, Mr. Speer shook my hand and said, Kelly, thank you for that. We will not close Oak Haven. And then at the meeting, he rebuffed, did not fund the schools, took the $1 million the teachers gave, and they closed Oak Haven Elementary School. I feel the same thing happened this time. The teachers yet again opened their contract, they gave back a half a million dollars. The town gladly took that money, and again, did not fund the schools. So the town has not done its due diligence. It did not open its police contract, it did not open its municipal contract. And I'm really getting sick and tired of hearing, oh my God, we've given up so much, we're not going to be able to fill that new position on the town side. I'm not going to be able to buy that new vehicle on the town side. Well, trying to stop myself from cursing, so on the school side, we haven't bought a new vehicle in I don't know how long. We can't even plow our school parking lots because our vehicles are so old. We have laid off, not have we not filled new positions. We've laid off employees every single year consecutively for the past 10 years that do not return, let alone not filling new positions. So at what point do we say? And I, and I understand, you know, the taxpayers are going to say, oh, the school committee is threatening, they're going to cut clubs and sports. There's nothing else left to cut. You have the minimal workforce you can have for teachers, because unfortunately, it's a teacher that needs to teach a child. You have the minimal number of bodies that you require by special education law to work with students to fulfill their individualized education plans. You're not maintaining your buildings. There's been no capital in way too many years to speak of. $200,000 on a $60 million budget is not capital. So there is nothing left to cut. This town council has done an irresponsible job. I'm glad that many of them are stepping down, and unfortunately, for those that aren't, that are up for reelection, they're out too. Because the community's done, the employees are done, and I just hope that the people that are running for seats that are vacant, or challenging seats that are up for election, really do take the time to understand all sides of the budget and make better decisions, because Coventry is a wonderful town. I've been in Coventry for many, many, many years. I don't even know how many, I'd have to think about it. And I too use the bike path, and I use, utilize the schools. I have two children in the schools, and I utilize, I frequent the businesses in Coventry very often. It's a shame that the taxpayers are stuck with a council that, in my opinion, is ignorant, short-sighted, and malicious. So I too hope the taxpayers vote this budget down. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kelly. Um, Mr. Murphy? Okay, Renee, you're the next person allowed to talk.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, please identify yourself.
Yep, Renee Smith, Free Wildflower Drive. So I just have a few questions. Um, I might have misunderstood a few things. First, I want to say thank you to Mr. Levis and all the teachers and administration. I have one child in the school system and one going into kindergarten, so I'm very nervous about how that's going to work. But I think, you know, the, the last few months of the year, um, the teachers really stepped up. They really helped us get through a lot of the challenges. I have a child that, that special needs, and, um, he really was able to get through his work with a lot of the help that we had. So, um, again, I want to say thank you on that part. A couple of the questions that I have, and I'm sorry to get into too many specifics about these items that you wanted to remove if we, uh, get, um, flat budgeted. But one question that I had was for the special education out of district transportation. I wanted to ask if that violates idea, because I would think that that would be in IEPs, and that would not be something that you could legally do. Again, this is just a question, uh, from me.
Can I ask, answer that, Renee? Just, just, I didn't mean to cut you off, apologize, but just to alleviate any fear. So we had, and Ms. Mandrelli had indicated, these are not taking away services. We have students that either age out, they turn a certain age, and they're not, you know, they, or students that have moved or don't require, we have students that go to maybe a specialized program that the least restrictive environment for them could be a private special ed day school. And, uh, you know, students move out of district, and so we're not cutting any services, uh, from students with disabilities. These are typically, and I think Ms. Mandrelli, I know she had said this, typically, we're not going to, we're going to, you know, we wouldn't put that, those numbers out right now, because by the time we get to the summer, we usually have students that move in, but we have to figure out how we're going to cut 1.8, so, but we're not going to take away services. The federal law is very clear, and the IEP team determined, so I just want to alleviate your, your concerns around that, that these are monies that we have, um, we had met with Mr. Wilson, the special ed director, and he had met with his team, and determined that these were potential savings that we could have going forward, so.
So this is something you normally would have as a savings, uh, potentially?
No, so, so normally what we do is we look at students that are, um, aging out or coming back to district. You know, we do make an effort when possible to bring, um, students back to districts, so they're in their communities. Sometimes that doesn't happen. But, you know, so what, at the end of every year, we go through, um, whether it be staff needed for like one-on-ones, or out-of-district placements, and see if there's any area that we think that we could reduce that. However, typically, that's offset by a new case coming in. So in this situation, these are areas that as of right this moment, and again, forget COVID, because, you know, I'm reducing staff for, for the operations, and we're not talking about what we'll need to add for COVID. But as of right now, we don't have an identified student that may need additional, you know, either out-of-district or additional one-on-ones. So we're making that cut. These are cuts, um, you know, that oftentimes, if they're made, once we get into the middle of the year, this no longer becomes a cut. So while we're cutting it out of the budget to get a balanced budget, we know that at any given time, we could have a student move into district that requires outplacement services or additional assistance, or we could have a student that we have now that's identified that they need additional assistance, or is, needs to go to an out-of-district placement. And we, uh, you know, follow all the proper protocols, and then that placement or that hiring is made. Um, and that is probably the biggest volatility in, um, a school's budget, is the special education cost and the, and how it can fluctuate. So while we're making that reduction, um, if a need arises, we will absolutely fund that.
Okay, all right. Uh, and you actually segue to my next question, which is with all of these cuts and everything that we're looking at, I think I missed the point where, how are we going to afford the COVID requirements? Or is that something that we're still trying to figure out with the committee?
So we're still, we're, we're, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So, um, all along, as soon as we started the remote learning, my recommendation to the school committee and the council has been to move forward with our originally presented budget, which asks for the 1.8 million, and any FY20 savings should be directly allocated to cover the COVID requirements, in addition to any federal funds that take place. That has been, since day one, that has been my absolute recommendation. Um, unfortunately, if we are reduced in our general operations by that 1.8 million, the savings that we have from FY20 is going to have to go to fill that budget gap. So as of right now, in a quick preliminary look, if we're looking at, um, plugging a hole of 1.8 million, I'm looking at an approximate carryover of about 1.3 million, and we have $700,000 of federal aid coming over. As of right now, we only have about $200,000 to allocate towards COVID response. Um, so, you know, that, that is the reason, because we don't know if any additional federal money is coming. That is the reason that I recommended going forward with the operating budget that was presented, and any savings was supposed to be the funding mechanism for the COVID response.
Okay, so we're expecting, I, I believe I, I saw the last, um, I think it was the last school committee meeting, which, um, you showed a slide that had, I believe it's actually 1.8 million or somewhere around there, that's expected, what we should be spending with, or that's recommended, I think, by the CDC, right, that we should be spending towards COVID.
That's under one scenario, so we're, you know, we're in the process of building out, um, several scenarios. But yes, there hasn't been a single option outside of 100% virtual, and even a 100% virtual would most likely require, um, Chromebook devices for our elementary students. That's over 300,000 right there. So, uh, the, the point that I think you're getting to is, um, as of right now, with the reduction of the 1.8 million in our general operations, I do not believe, at this time, under any of the preliminary scenarios that I've looked at, that we have the funding available to cover the COVID response requirements that are coming out of the state without additional federal funding.
And is there any recommendation that's being discussed at that point, if you don't have the funding, which schools are not open? Or again, it's still open, we don't know?
So let me just respond to that, Renee, is that, that's why we're planning. I mean, originally, when we started this, some districts were saying, we're not going to have the funds, so let's halt on different scenarios. I'm not going to do that. We're going to put scenarios together, um, and, and cost them out. Well, I think what the, the message tonight, though, is that if the level funded budget goes forward, we're already starting 1.8 million dollars in the hole. And the reason that these items were put up, my understanding is this document's been shared all over town. The reason that this, this document has been, is put up in the items there is because even though it impacts, obviously, it impacts students, you know, it impacts, but with, in terms of theater and drama and music and all the clubs and sports, that we're expected to still go forward in, in open schools, and so we need to have teachers in front of students, you know? If you followed us all through this, you, the budget process, we've said that we were going to, we put forward a budget that we felt we needed to continue to move forward. We made 380 some odd layoffs last year, right, ridiculous amount. This year, we laid off 21 individuals, but all along, our conversation was, this is what we need to move forward. And let's be honest, to go forward based on any of the scenarios, or any of the scenarios where students are in person, we're going to need more staff. So some people out there, I guess, are asking, why aren't they laying off teachers? We've done that. We haven't done our layoffs with the, uh, what's called a support-related personnel. But the reality is, we're going to need more custodians. They're under that. As we said, we can't, we're not going to eliminate teaching assistants that are required by an IEP, and we're probably going to need more supervisory assistance if students are going to eat in classrooms. Those teachers need to also have their, their, their breaks. And so there's no scenario here where it's not going to cost us less money. There's no scenario going forward with that, every school district's in our situation, where they're not sure where those additional funds are going. Not every school district is in the position that we're at, where level funding means we've got to reduce another 1.8 million dollars. Are there districts where that's transpired? Yes, but there's also districts where the conversation is, the council wants to give more money, you know, the city council or the mayor, to help support this. So, um, we, we, you know, it, we need to keep positive and keep moving forward. Again, I know hope is not a strategy, but putting on the brakes and saying, we're not going to do this, we can't do this, is also not a strategy. You know, we need to keep going and realizing that we have, still have several weeks before August 31st.
Thank you. I appreciate your feedback.
Hey, Sarah, just to bounce off Renee's point on the 108,000. If you were to receive additional requests for out-of-district transportation, and if we made all of these cuts, where would you, and, and this is a general question, not a specific one, where does that extra money come from?
So if we have expenditures that exceed our revenues, we will ultimately have to file with the state a corrective action plan. You know, we, we will have to basically put together, saying we acknowledge that we are going to overrun expenditures, I'm sorry, overrun revenues at that point in time. And then we will be required to come up with a plan as to how we're going to fix that, you know, going forward, so.
So what I'm hearing is basically, we make that cut based on a prospect, we have zero, zero, zero additional. We could put ourselves in a very difficult situation. Or, or at least?
Right, yeah, and, and again, I just want to remind everybody that to, right, and I just want to remind everybody that we already cut out 1.5 million dollars of this budget, just this fiscal year. You know, about $400,000 last year and a million dollars the year before. So, um, I agree, you know, as a parent, you know, especially one now who will be devastated, she was devastated that she didn't get to do any of this year. You know, I am right there with a lot of the parents to say that this is not the route that we want to go. But when you make that number of cuts and that dollar magnitude, um, the choices that you have left are very limited. And to, to go and cherry pick each line, you know, even to take 10% off of every single, uh, supply budget, the supply budgets are not significant in and of themselves. Um, there aren't any other big ticket items that we have that ability to easily remove to get to that 1.8 million.
Okay, Mr. Murphy, there must be more?
Yes, there's two more.
Okay, Anthony, you're on. Please identify your name and address.
Anthony Carpignello, 28 Westview Drive. Excuse me, um, I may have missed this, I, I joined it a little bit late. But with the schools being closed due to the COVID, shouldn't there have been less money spent on utilities, lunches, other, other things? I mean, I would think that if there was less money spent, then we'd have somewhat of a surplus from the previous year. Maybe I'm just uneducated on it, but it's just, in most simplest terms.
Nope, uh, Anthony, you're spot on. So because the schools were closed, we are looking at, you know, uh, about a 1.3, 1.4 million dollar surplus for FY20. So you're correct in, in that assumption, and that that money will be carried over. What we were discussing is that that 1.4 million, the recommendation is to use that to cover new costs that we will incur in FY21 as a result of COVID. So if we took that 1.4 million dollars and plugged that with a 1.8 million dollar gap by the town level funding us, one, we're still $400,000 short in our operations, and then two, that leaves no money to meet the state and federal mandates that we are going to have to adhere to in order to reopen school, um, for the, for COVID response. So you're correct in that carryover. It's just how we need to use that carryover in, in, uh, the next fiscal year.
Okay, understood. Uh, can I ask one other question? Is there any way we can force the town committee to communicate better, like? Is there any way we can force the town committee to communicate better, like Mr. Pearson said? It's a shame that, I've only lived here five years. It seems like there's a total dysfunction between the school committee and the town committee. Like, they don't want to support you. And I didn't know if there was any way to communicate better or force them to.
So, so Anthony, I'm, I'm sorry, Sarah, but Anthony, so this is Craig Levis. So we met every single week, you know. So I can't speak in terms, and I'm not going to speak for the school committee, right? But I can tell you that Sarah and myself met weekly with the town manager and the town finance director until recently. And so, and the meetings weren't always, you know, like, there was a lot of challenging meetings, right? But I thought we got to a place where there was honesty, and that's, that's all, that's what I can say. So I don't know how, and I would boast, not boast about it, but maybe boast about it. I would say publicly, and if you've listened to any of the school committee meetings, you've heard me say that, I can't imagine there's another community where the town manager, interim town manager and superintendent and the finance directors met every week. But I agree, there was a breakdown, you know, and if I had known exactly what that breakdown was, I would have confronted, because that's my style. I've done that in the past. All I can do is ask. But I just feel there's a complete, you know, I don't, I don't want to go off on a tangent. I'm extremely frustrated. I wouldn't want anybody to be in this chair that I'm sitting in now, because we, we, we put forward that we support, and if you've heard me, I support all of education, right? I often have people want to pit, you know, one club against another, one sport against another, and I don't buy into that. You know, my mantra is, I'm going to support all programs. But we don't even have a chance to go, we weren't even given the opportunity to put our budget forward. It was taken away from us after months and months of working together. So, you know, I mean, people, you know, I can't tell people what to do, but if it was me and I'm voting in this town, I'm going to make sure that whoever I put in a seat or support, supports this community as a whole. Just not a little agenda, you know. And that's what we deal with. That's what, ever since I've been here, that's the politics. You know, I live, you know, I'm 59. I've dealt with a lot of communities. I'm very involved. I, this is, you know, I'm going to say, this is an anomaly for me, and maybe people don't appreciate that, but I've never seen a community so large, it's so beautiful, so wonderful, so apathetic when it comes to making decisions and about, you know, who you put in office that care about this community. You know, because I see that, it's, my understanding is, it's been recycled, some of these people. It's just not, you know. So we hate to be in this position tonight. We need people to take action, whatever that action is. You decide, but this has been going on. We've been talking about this a long time. So.
All right. Thank you very much. You explained it. No, it's, I wish that we could get more people to support you.
Hey, Anthony, can I, yeah, just one thing. You have a power of a vote, and I know you've been only here five years, but we need people to step up, and you can be that change. And I urge you to go back to some of our other meetings. They're all recorded. There's a lot of, you know, you'll see a lot of our discussions involve numbers and math and talking to the budget. And I, and go look at the council and the way they make decisions. And, you know, I'm at the point, I'll throw them under the bus. The truth is, you know, the proof's in the pudding when you're making decisions. We've talked extensively since February on every aspect of our budget. And, you know, you have to decide who you're going to trust to move the town forward.
Absolutely. And the vote is what day, the 14th, did you say?
The 16th.
16th, okay.
Votes on 16th, the financial town meeting is on the 14th.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Anthony?
Yes, sir.
I have one more, one more thing to add. Madam Chair and I, and the superintendent and Sarah, we met with the council president and another council member, and Mr. Wazika and the town financial officer, John Arnett, we met with them shortly before COVID-19 hit. And they were extremely pleased, and they were committed to, they were extremely pleased with the teacher contract and what we did with that. And you can tell me if I'm wrong, Madam Chair, but they actually agreed to fund the 1.8 million. And some, Mr. Levis is correct, somewhere along the line, they decided they weren't going to do it. And that, that's the worst part of it, Anthony. When someone makes a commitment to you, and they say, they make a promise, they give their word that they're going to follow through. And like, like Mr. Pearson was saying, and then in April, the town manager says it's going to be, passes it out to the council members, and the council members say, not all of them. I can't blame all of them. But several of them say, okay, we're going for a 0% budget, because this is the time to do it. And they're completely wrong. This is the worst time to do it. And thank you, Anthony, for calling in, and thank you, Madam Chair, for allowing me to comment.
Thank you, Mr. Florio. Thank you, Anthony. Your comments are much appreciated. Mr. Murphy?
Okay. Deb, you are on. Please identify yourself to the committee.
Hi, can you hear me? Hi, this is Deb Tyree, 76 Coventry Drive. I've been watching tonight, and I've spent a lot of time with several of the committee members here, being on the reentry committee for Coventry and trying to make a plan and pull it together for us to go back in the fall. We've heard many times that you have presented a pre-COVID budget. We've talked about what's going to happen as we go into the fall and then the following school year of not being able to get out of the hole. Sarah has openly and quite clearly stated that we have very limited choices as to where we're going to continue to cut. And all we seem to do, even in our reentry committee, is talk about the increases in demands and what financial resources are we going to be able to tap into in order to make reentry into the schools a possibility. We've heard all the concerns about busing. We've heard concerns about the arrangements of schedules. The bottom line is, we can't afford this, and it's not looking good as we go forward. So how are we getting these resources? How are we funding these mandates? And if we don't have answers to that, and again, if, even if we could put COVID aside, which obviously we cannot, the budget that we presented was pre-COVID. At what point are we going to consider a carolo action against the town? Where do we stand with that?
I'll just answer, right now, we're trying to prepare to get back into school, right? That's what we're doing. You're part of that. Those, those things, you know, we have to go through the financial town meeting. We have to go through the all-day referendum and see where we're at the end. I mean, I'm, I'm believing that this community will rally and believes in education and will force the hand of the council. I mean, I don't see how anybody that values their property, that values being part of a community, that values education, can listen to what's transpired with the council and the interim town manager and support that. I mean, I'm sure there are a few people, so. Because we'll get where we need to be, Deb. We'll get where we need to be. But first things first, you know, I, it's called a positive presupposition, right? I'm going to assume the best of people. And I feel that after last year, I mean, you know, this community, our school community, remember, we had four deaths last year, right when school ended. And we realized we had a budget the day before school ended. And then we had the ransomware, right? It was one thing after another that would just, could have destroyed many communities. We bounced back. And then look what happened. The momentum we carried into this, and honestly, and again, it wasn't perfect how we handled the pandemic. But one of our employees went to a dentist today and said, her, the dental hygienist, it was, I don't know, somewhere, I forgot where they were, somewhere down South County, but has children in Coventry and couldn't say enough nice things. You know, usually when people come to my door and say, can I talk to you, you know, lately, I'm a little, little shy, you know, but it was very positive. So we've, we've kept on rallying, and the last thing this community needs is this tonight. But I have to have faith that it will pull around. And then, you know, I'm not throwing in the towel. I can't. My job is to continue to overcome these barriers that are become, you know, stop dead ends for a lot of people. We've, we've done that for four, four years here. So, but we'll get where we need to be at some point, and the community doesn't need to do that. That's a, unfortunately, that becomes a lose-lose proposition, costs a lot of money, but we're going to do what we need to do, because we have a responsibility to take care of students, families through our staff, and I'm committed to doing that. Again, I don't want to make this political. This is about basic stu, you know, we keep that laser beam focused on student needs. And we've continued to do that. But, you know, as far as the funds coming, I mean, honestly, the federal government's going to have to have a major infusion into all schools for us to meet the needs. I mean, that's the bottom line. There's many articles around that. Even, even Mitch McConnell mentioned the other night, you know, he's been adamant about not funding, you know, stimulus yet. Was saying, we've got to, you know, fund the schools. We've got to give more money. So I'm hopeful that'll happen. It's just when, so.
Madam Chair, you have a minute to respond for a second?
I think, yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I, Deb, I want to thank you for being part of the solution on the task force. First of all, a lot of people, it takes a lot of people to step up and make this happen. And the important point, I think, to take out of this, and I'm speaking for myself as a school committee member, is right, I think in this point, we can say is that the best thing that people can do is step up and help, right? Go out and vote. Do what you need to do as a citizen to get educated and do your duty. As far as carolo goes, I'm going to speak myself. It is a, is a tool that we can use as a school committee and as a school district. It is a hammer that you bring out in extreme circumstances, because it can be destructive to a community. It divides communities, it hits the schools against the town, and it costs a lot of money. And so while it's a tool, it's probably not our first device that we should use against, you know, in trying to resolve this effort. Some of this is completely dynamic, and we're going to work as a school committee. It's our job as a school committee administration to work through it. And we'll do everything we can to avoid carolo and work with the town, because we know that it's what we need to do. But in the end, if the hammer needs to come out, to your point, you know, for myself, I'm always willing to use whatever tools are necessary to protect the district. So I don't know how others feel about it. Welcome to chime in, but again, I thank you. But I also want parents to, I know there's a lot going on tonight, also scary. And I don't want to scare away the kids from our district or the parents from our district, because every district is going through this. And so it's important that while we're talking about all the doom and gloom, that we keep stability for the parents and allow, you know, hopefully you have faith in the school committee and administration. We've demonstrated that. We're doing our job in every effort to resolve. So, and that's all I have. Thank you.
I think Mr. Pearson wanted to say something.
Yes and no. I don't like hearing the term carolo thrown out, because there are eight things, at least, maybe 10, that need to happen before we consider a carolo action. And if you think the cuts that were shown on the screen tonight are devastating, you don't even want to know what has to happen for us to get to the point where we can start talking about carolo. So as, as Mr. Murray said and Mr. Levis said, we need to do everything we can first to avoid that. And that is the tool, not the hammer. It is the tool of last resort, because it's a nuclear weapon. It's not a hammer. That's all I have to say about that. Thank you.
Better analogy.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. I think I have to agree with you on that. But we will, if we are forced, we will do what we have to do. But I agree, we've talked carolo in the past in this town, and we've weighed all the various options. And by the time we're finished looking at it, we realize that we'll, this is a no-win situation. And talk about dividing a community, it's probably one of the worst things you can possibly do. But I appreciate your comments, Deb. Do you have any other comments to make?
No, I appreciate your answer. I just think that it's important to consider all avenues, and to think that this community is not divided over this, I would, I would disagree. I think the community is very divided over this issue. And while I do understand that carolo is a huge step, and I would never undertake that lightly, I also look at what the town council has done with the level funding of the school department over a continuum of years now. This isn't a one-shot deal. And to say that we're not at desperate times, I would disagree with that, too. I think we're at a very significant point right now. And again, taking away COVID, we had a significant cut to us that had nothing to do with COVID. This is a pre-COVID budget. So I thank you for your time. Thank you for your answer. But I still think that there are considerations that need to be made. We have taken a lot of hits over the last several years. And to say that things don't come back, that's a true story. So if you're looking at the cuts now that you just presented and say, going forward from here, well, we're not going to have sports. Okay, for how long? Is it ever coming back? Where is that money going to come from in the future? So thank you for your time. I appreciate your answer. I just hope that we do take a serious look at maybe pushing back a little bit harder than what we have been in the past. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. And I agree. I think all options will be on the table. But I am very, very hopeful that the citizens will come out and vote down the budget, and that will say the council to do something different. But unfortunately, when you do do carolo, all those things, some of those things that are on our list, they will be automatically cut. Anything that's not part of the basic education plan, the person who comes in to look at the district cuts all those things. Department of Ed. So we would not have any sports. We would not have any clubs, curricular activities. Those all are the first things on the table in a carolo action. So one way or the other, you're, it's a no-win situation. But again, all things will be considered, quite honestly. Mr. Murphy, anybody else?
Yes, we have one more. Kelly, you are free to speak.
Hi, Kelly, I'm Anna Kus again. I'm Sugar Maple Drive. I just want to echo the comments of the speaker, Deb, who just spoke. I understand everything the school committee said. The problem is, as Kathy, as you just said, if you did try to file a carolo action, everything that's on the table to be cut would be cut, and there would be a few other things, and I'm well aware of what they are as a union leader. The problem is, you're a year out from a carolo action. So if the budget does pass, and all those things would be cut anyway, as a school committee, you have to plan a year ahead and take steps. You have to write letters to the Department of Education asking for waivers, which those deny. You'll have to write letters to the union leadership, which I'll deny. But you can't wait another year to consider whether they're doing it. So you're right. What you're going to end up this, with this year, if the budget passes, is very close to what you'd have to eliminate during a carolo action, but you'd yet again be a year away from it. So I would, I would just say again, it should be a consideration, because you know there is a structural deficit. We keep talking about fiduciary responsibility on the town side. You, too, as school committee members, have a fiduciary responsibility to keep our schools productive and open. And at some point, you have to say, you've done everything you can, and now we have to take this legal action. So as long as you're cognizant that you're a year out from that, and you have to do things within a year to get there, I would just appreciate it being on the table as one of several options you may be considering.
Thank you, Kelly. We appreciate that comment.
Madam Chair, can I say one thing?
Sure.
Just, just a reminder, and I know it's going to take a year for any action to take place, but what's the shorter action is to vote down this budget. And then we also, just as a reminder, have a council that's mainly going out the door, and you have the power of the voters, that is, it is going to be much easier, and again, I'm speaking for myself, much easier for me, and I actually am very lucky. Councilwoman Anne Dixon has been very supportive, and I do communicate with her. But I will say that in the other district, the citizens have the power this year, which is, doesn't always come up, to create that change, to ensure that our other members have more people who are communicative on the other side, and who are maybe willing to work towards a more mathematically-based, school-supported budget. So. So I will put that out there is that, you know, while Carullo is a destructive, long-term effort, I think that using the power of the vote this year and letting people hear what you have to say is a great strategy for change.
Um, thank you, Mr. Murray. Um, well, I think that was the last raised hand. And I believe, unless someone else, um, one of the, one of us.
No, I think we're all set, Ms. Padnill.
Okay, thank you. Um, then I think we have number eight, which is the superintendent's report, um, which was our reference number five, the Parent-Guardian Survey. So would you like to discuss that?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pass this off to Mr. Coward. Um, he's sitting there with that 1970s paneling and I want to put him right front and center. And, uh,
Yep. Um, are you going to put up that?
Yeah, I'll ask Mr. Murphy to put up the, uh, the document. And, and all kidding aside, I want to thank Mr. Coward and, um, for putting this together and tabulating it. So this is a survey that we sent out to, uh, our, our families. And the results and what we just, what we found out is our results are very similar to not only other communities, but even looking at other states. So having said that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Coward.
Okay, so I'm going to try to be brief and concise here. Um, so on the top part of this document, you'll see strengths and challenges in, um, in relation to distance learning. And, uh, these bullets were compiled based on the feedback that we got from our teachers and our community members on the two surveys that we sent out. I'm not going to read every item, but there is, uh, some important, uh, pieces to, um, to kind of point out, and there are things that we're looking at in terms of making distance learning, um, better for next year. Um, it's important to also note that, um, when we look at strengths and challenges, we're thinking about it in, in the model that we had, uh, put together in March, on March 13th, when school was, um, let out, we had a week to pull this together. And once we put our distance learning plan together, we made some slight revisions, but we didn't think it was fair to the community to make big, overwhelming changes. But we did identify things that we wanted to improve upon. So for many of these things, we, we actually have been, um, aware of and, and, and thinking of ways to address. So those are the strengths and challenges that, uh, came up. Part of the reentry, um, application is for us to identify these strengths and challenges. So this, this list, this bulleted list will be, uh, attached to the, um, application that we send in next Friday. Any questions about any of that? I don't think anybody wants me to read all these bullets.
And Don, I'll say, just want to say, we're going to post this on our, that link tomorrow. So it'll be up for the community to look at the reentry planning link.
If you scroll down, Jim, a little bit to those graphs. Um, so a number of days ago, uh, in working with, uh, Kelly Aronakis and, uh, and, and, and Mr. Levis and a few other people, we started using, thinking about using our survey data to, um, inform our reentry plan. This, these, these graphs are part of, uh, what came out of the results. This is, um, very surface-level information. This has not been disaggregated in any way, shape or form. I'm planning to go through all of that data and disaggregate it and break it out by, uh, school, by level. Uh, there's a number of different ways to look at this data. And in, in, in previous presentations, uh, you know, I tried to find a few different ways to present the information so that you can understand it from, you know, but apples-to-apples comparison to maybe an apples-to-oranges comparison and plus a few different views. But the question at hand here was, did your child or children have adequate access to technology and the internet? Uh, we're pretty proud of this, uh, graph, and this has a lot to do with Mr. Murphy and his department. We worked very hard to make sure that all our kids had devices. And, uh, you know, we're a one-to-one district in six to, to 12. And, and that's, you know, um, uh, made this lift easier. But what Mr. Murphy also did with his department in, in collaboration with all the principals is to work very hard to get devices into the hands of elementary students. So the overall, 94% of the, the people who took the survey said they had a device and reliable internet. Uh, the red sliver, which is very small, said they had a device but unreliable internet access. Yellow said we did not have a device but reliable internet access. And then the green said we did not have either, a device or access. Um, the yellow section is something we need to investigate a little bit further because we worked so hard to get devices out. We want to make sure that, um, we didn't miss anybody. I do know that some families had indicated to us that they did not need a device because they had, um, something at home. But then as distance learning evolved, they had maybe multiple children needing to get on devices, maybe at the same time, that I think, uh, they experienced some challenges. But overall, having 94% of our population having a good device and reliable internet. And just for a second to speak to the internet, uh, Mr. Murphy worked very hard to make sure, and I used our different social media and, um, in an email, uh, school messenger account to communicate to families about internet options that are available, whether it was through Cox Communication or was the arrangement that the governor had set up with the local, um, not the local, the, uh, cell phone companies, allowing people to use their phones as hotspots at no additional cost. So we, we tried to work very hard to make sure people had access to, uh, internet. The next question said, did you feel your child's workload was appropriate during this time? So 70, 70% said that they felt that the workload was appropriate. About 15% said there was not enough work. And, um, about 14% said there was too much work. So, uh, the majority, the vast majority were satisfied, but we do need to dive a little bit deeper into the red and into the yellow. And that's where disaggregating the data is crucial because we may, uh, be able to whittle this down to a particular grade, a particular pool, um, a particular level, and then address a problem where, where it exists. Any questions about those two? Mr. Murphy, can you scroll down a little bit? This one, um, you think there was adequate communication with the school? Uh, 53%, and, and actually, Mr. Murphy, a little bit further down, just so I can explain the scale. Um, so the scale on these two questions, a little bit further down, Jim. The scale on this question, um, I actually have the question type dropped in here so we could keep track of this. Keep going. So the question was, do you think there was adequate communication with the school? One was considered poor and four was considered excellent. Um, you know, for a lack of better terms, I would have called two fair and three good, right? So poor, fair, good, excellent communication. Uh, the way that this, uh, the Google, uh, um, forum sets it up, it, it gives people an option to kind of weigh in at a few different places. Um, and then the, the next question was, do you feel that your child or children received enough direct, uh, face-to-face and group instruction during this time? So Jim, can you move back up if you don't mind? So in the first one, uh, we had 53%, almost 60% of our families responded there was an adequate communication with the school. Uh, you had another 33% respond, I would say in the affirmative, but maybe not as, uh, you know, not as strongly as an excellent response. And then we had, at the opposite end, about 9% and then 3% that said, um, the, the communication was poor. So, um, in, in, you know, the, the, I'm not going to say the vast majority, 53% is over half, said excellent, which I think is good. Uh, excellent is excellent, but I think we do need to look a little bit deeper into some of those other categories. This next one, though, is the one that we want to spend some more time in. And this is one of the areas that we identified as being a challenge, uh, pretty much as early as April. We knew that, uh, with all our students being at home, with the limitations of families having, uh, to figure out how they're going to work and help their kids, and then teachers trying to find opportunities to get in front of students, we knew that this was a challenge. So when we asked families about direct, face-to-face, group instruction time and what they felt about that, about 32% said excellent. Another 32%, I would call, you know, the category of quote-unquote "good." Another 25% would, you know, I would call fair, and then another about 9% said it was poor. So the way that that breaks out, uh, means that that, that's definitely an area that, um, we can feel that we need to spend some time in. And we, and we knew that already. So when we look at distance learning and we look at the distance learning policy that we're trying to draft and what distance learning will look like in our reentry plan, we know we need to put more time and attention in setting up expectations about face-to-face, direct instructional time for students, whether it's in small groups, large groups, or potentially even one-on-one, depending on the level of need. Any questions about those? Jim, uh, Mr. Florio?
What I notice is on the second one, when you add the 25.9% and the 9.8%, that's larger than the amount of three and four. Four, three being 32% and four being dirt, 32.3%.
Yeah, so if you put those together, that's 64%. And then the other two, if you put them together, it's about, um, 35%.
It's like a third, a third, and a third.
If you dice it up that way. And that's why I think this is someplace we need to spend some, some time. Because, uh, you know, we'd like to see the four being a, a, a majority at the minimum, but a, a much bigger majority, uh, you know, in the best-case scenario. So, uh, you're seeing exactly what we're seeing and, and that's why we need to work in that area.
Don, that, Don?
Yes.
One more question, Madam Chair. Don, that's what I was hearing as I was walking through the neighborhoods, getting my signatures.
I'm sure you were hearing that. And as the director of curriculum, I was hearing it from principals. Um, principals were hearing it from teachers. Teachers were hearing it from families. And even though today I'm just sharing with you the community results, um, and at a different time, maybe I can share with you the faculty responses. Our faculty responded the same way on this question. So i- i- it's not, it's not about a lack of interest or a lack of motivation to, to work with kids, you know, in a direct, face-to-face, small, large group setting. It actually had more to do with opportunity. So our, our staff felt the same way. So this is, this is, uh, primed for improvement. This is the, you know, it's a, it's someplace that everybody agrees needs some attention. Mrs. Clooney, did you have a question?
Yeah, I did, Don. Um, did you, is there, was there any way to determine, uh, age groups they were in? Or is it, did you not ask that question?
I, I actually did ask that question. So that's part of the disaggregation. So I asked the families to identify, um, a grade level and a school. So when I break the data down, I could actually, uh, drive down to either the school level or maybe even the grade level. So I'll, I'll give a, for instance, without actually having anything to back it up, just to make an example. If we identified that many of the families who indicated that they did not feel good about the direct instruction happened to be at, um, you know, the high school level. And I'm making this up, right? It could be any level. But let's say it happened to be the high school. Then we would work with the high school administration. They would work with their staff to try to find ways to improve this area so that our students would have a better experience. So that's where the disaggregation comes in. This is really more surface-level, kind of big pictures. Just to kind of like, give you a little taste of what we found. I, I know the superintendent had mentioned it the last meeting, and so we thought it was important just to put some of it in front of you. Um, I would have loved to dived into this deeper, but at the moment, we're so wrapped up in reentry, I, I, I can't do this at the moment. But that, it's coming. I promise you that.
Oh, thank you. Thanks, Don.
Yep. Mr. Murphy, uh, scroll down, pass those two questions. Um, next one is, do you feel your children were engaged during distance learning? This one is almost a third of the people said yes. Um, 44% of the people said somewhat, and then 17% said no. This is another area we want to spend some time on because we want to increase student engagement during distance learning. This is good data. And just like with the previous question, I have enough disaggregated, uh, opportunities to drive down to the grade level or the, the, the school level to, to look at this closer. We need to find a remedy for this, and this is, this is something we need to focus on. And, and the next question, um, you know, and this one is one that we also knew almost immediately. And it's something the superintendent wanted to focus on before we even started distance learning, like almost immediately. He wanted us to have daily contact with kids. He wanted us to touch base with families. Um, the question is, do you feel your children had, uh, their social, emotional needs met during distance learning? About a third answered in each category, uh, with yes, no, and somewhat. Uh, it's very difficult. I'm not saying it's impossible. It's very difficult to provide social, emotional support during distance learning because there's so many things that we are trying to figure out in this new world. Um, the students are not in our space. They're in a different space. And our opportunities to get in front of them are different than they are when they're in the building. With that being said, it's never been more important to address their social, emotional needs because, um, you know, when you have this, this very isolating experience of sitting at home for long periods of time without opportunities to be with your peer group or with your teacher, uh, it can impact, uh, what you're going through socially, emotionally. And, and then you compound on that, you know, maybe a, a, a parent who has lost a job or somebody who is sick in your family or has, God forbid, passed away. Uh, these are, um, things that are really impacting kids. So this is something we're going to continue to work on. And we've actually already started this conversation well before the school year got out. And next, next one, um, Mr. Murphy. This one, I just took the data out. Um, and the real reason I did this is because when I asked the question, it was which scenario do you prefer? And it was full, hybrid, distance. And then the last option I gave them was other. And then when people respond with other, they type in a response. I, I must have had 45 different things that people typed in. Many of them were very similar to, to each other. But what it did was it made the graph very difficult to read. So I just pulled out the top three because those are the significant, uh, options at the moment. 51% of our people said that they want our kids in school in a full-person return. That means all the kids going to school. Uh, about 37% said they would like a hybrid model. And about 15% of our population would prefer their students, uh, continue with the distance learning that we did in the spring. Um, so that, that's some pretty interesting data, and it's important for us to kind of look at that and think about how that, uh, impacts what we're going to do next year. Any questions about that? I'm almost done here. Scroll down, Mr. Murph. Is that the last one?
I think that's the last one.
All right. The only other, yeah, the only other one that we were going to discuss that I guess maybe I didn't put on there was about transportation. Um, and that was the question that Mr. Levis had mentioned earlier about what, what, uh, if you would access transportation. And, uh, I, I know this one well because we've talked about it numerous times. It's about 60% of our families said they would use school transportation. And then, um, I think it was 15% that said they would not. And then it was, you know, like 33% or something that said that they had other transportation arrangements. You know, sometimes it's daycare vans or they commute with a family member or whatever. So we had about 60% say they would use our buses. What I don't know is how many, what percent uses our buses when we're not in this scenario, right? We, we provide busing to the whole community, but I don't know how many people actually access it. And I'm only saying that from, from the perspective as a principal because I stood out in front of Washington Oak every single day when kids got dropped off when I was the principal there. And many, many of my students came in with their parents in their car. They had access to busing. They just didn't take advantage of that, um, of, of the transportation. Any questions for me?
I have one, um, Mr. Coward. Um, how many, uh, surveys went out? So, uh, uh, do you have a, uh, idea of what the percentage, uh, return was?
With 1,300 people responded, which is, I, I can't give you a percentage. Obviously, I would have to go look and see how many families we had because it was one survey per family, not one survey per student. Um, and I don't know if Mr. Levis has that information. I want to say we have in the ballpark of 2,500 families, give or take a few hundred in either direction. So we have about 1,300 participate, which is a, is a good number. Um, I know some bigger districts had fewer, fewer particip-, uh, fewer, um, people participate. So I think, um, our response is a good sample size, in my opinion.
Wonderful. I, I was curious about that, but thank you. Thank you for, um, that presentation as well. Um, very interesting and very useful data.
Yep. And I'll, and I'll bring that other information in front of you, both staff and community with some disaggregated information, just so you can kind of get a, 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 a better understanding of where we're going to go with all this information.
Okay, thank you. Did you have anything else, Mr. Levis, before I?
No. I'm good. Thank you.
All right, thank you. If, does any school committee member have anything to say? If you just raise your hand, I'm going to go through the whole list of you. Does anybody have any comments? Okay, Mr. Murray?
Make it quick. Don, uh, great data. Thank you. Um, do you think you're going to have enough time with the task force and everything else to actually translate this data to sort of a program that'll help?
So what we've been doing-
I know you're very busy and said that. I know you're very busy, and I said that.
So, and so what we're doing, and I'm sure Lori can probably chime in, or Craig, is we're kind of cherry-picking our survey data right now. We have very specific questions we have to respond to on the template, and so what we're doing is, we're kind of cherry-picking different pieces of data, so that we can answer the questions. But that's not a full disaggregated response. It's more about going to a specific question, looking at specific data, and using that to support our response in the template. And I think when you see the template in its entirety, you'll understand more of what I'm getting at. But I, you know, in terms of really going through item by item, with every single piece being sort of analyzed, I haven't done that yet, and I, but I do think we have enough information to be able to complete the application that needs to be submitted.
So, so to just build on what Don said, he's right. For the initial application that we have to put in, we really just need to go to the survey and get the big picture, so that we can fill in the template. We'll need to drill down when we get to the specifics in the plan, in that next step, that we'll have to submit to RIDE. That's when we'll really need to drill down in that data, because then we're going to have to get really specific about responses.
I mean, the biggest thing for me as a parent is that it translates, because I kind of, I look at the data, and I identify with it. So the biggest thing is, I want to come out of it beyond RIDE, is that it actually translates the results from the new school year, because it's likely that we're going to have some distance learning component. So, I mean, I have my pluses, minuses, and it's not my place here, as a school committee person, to lay those out, but, you know, my hope is that it leads to an improvement plan that actually leads to action, to keep getting better, that's all. And we have enough time to do that. I know you're under the gun, so.
And to kind of go with Mr. Levis said earlier, what he has communicated to us is that this data is very similar to what other school departments are finding in their surveys, that there's some consistencies, almost, almost to the, to the number, right? You know, we, when we do a survey and ask, you know, what, what model you prefer, what scenario you prefer, and we have 51% coming in saying they want to come into school full-time, other communities around us, you know, as reported by Mr. Levis, are saying very similar things. So I think this is not just a specific to Coventry, I think it's more about culturally what's going on in our community, and how people feel about, you know, our current situation.
Well, I guess the positive on that is, if everyone's dealing with the same thing, there might be a common solution, or at least a common core solution, to address the majority of it through other resources, and then we kind of tailor that for our community, correct?
Correct. I think that's the approach, and why we're trying to work with those other communities.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Thank you very much. I guess we'll just throw it out to the public. I don't see any hands up. Mr. Murphy, do you see anybody?
There is no one.
Okay, then I think we're good to go on to citizens' comments.
I'm sorry, someone just raised a hand.
Oh, that's okay, Madam.
Okay, sorry. Okay, Jessica, you're on with the committee. Identify yourself.
Hi, Jessica, 306 Chaplain Drive. Just curiosity, on that question that you're speaking to, around the percentage of people who want to have in-person only, that was an option to choose multiple answers in that one question, I just want to make sure that that was understood and considered in the results.
I have to go back and look at that. You're saying that there was the opportunity, or there was not? Say that again.
You could choose more than one option in that.
Okay, I'd have to go back and look at that. I, if that was the case, that's not necessarily what I was intending, but that's good information. Thank you.
Because I know for us, as in our family, we did choose two different options, you know, preference and a backup, so just want to make that clear to the committee.
Thank you, that's good to know. I appreciate the feedback.
Thank you, Jess, that's really helpful. I think that might be it, Mr. Murphy? Yes, okay. Great. We can move on to citizens' comments. Are there any citizens, presidents that would like to speak, or make any comments?
Doesn't seem to be anyone.
All right, I think we've lost quite a bit of our audience, seeing that it's already 9:37. Okay, so I guess we can go to agenda item number 10, which is to schedule the next meeting. Is there a motion? You're on mute, Dave.
Sorry, sorry. Madam Chair, I make a motion that the next virtual meeting of the school committee be scheduled for Thursday, July 23rd, 2020, at 6:00 PM.
I second the motion. Could we have a roll call, please?
Kathy Patnau? Dave Florio?
Yes.
Luke Murray?
Yes.
Donna Clunian?
Yes.
James Pearson?
Yes.
Multi-carries, 5-0. Is there a motion to adjourn?
One thing, Madam Chair? May I say one thing? One thing, Madam Chair? Hey, Don, Don, you, Don?
Yes, sir.
Don, I love the decor. Look at my, look at the back. I have a 19, right behind me, even a milk, right down to the milk glass. Good night, Don. Sorry, sorry, Madam Chair.
That's okay, Dave. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to adjourn.
I have 9:38.
I second the motion.
Thank you, Donna. All in favor? All right, thank you. Multi-carries, 5-0. Thank you, everyone, for all your participation. Thank you, thank you to the committee and to the administration. Very much appreciated, all of what you've given for this evening's presentation. All right, we'll see you at the next meeting. Good luck.